City Commission.
This meeting is being.
Let me admit people. Okay, oh wait, sorry about that, thank you. Thank you. Can you do me a favor and keep an eye on that too?
Yeah, absolutely.
Faith, are we ready?
We are ready whenever you are.
Okay, thank you. So now we're ready. The Livingston City Commission meeting for December sixth, two thousand twenty-two is called to order. Roll call, please.
Chair News.
Here.
Vice Chair Kell.
Here.
Commissioner Lyons.
Here.
Excuse me. Commissioner Friedman.
Here.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Present.
I'm out of order there. Thanks, Faith. Next on the agenda is general public comments. So individuals are reminded that public comments should be limited to items over which the city commission has supervision, controlled jurisdiction or advisory power. So if you want to give public comment on anything that's not on the agenda, now is your chance. Just signify that you want to. Lindy, you'll go first. Patricia, I could see her again. So if you could just start with your name and address, please, Lindy.
Lindy gives them two fifteen West Park Apartment one oh three. And I'd like to ask the commission, reevaluate the dog barking ordinances. I, we have a barking dog in our neighborhood that's very lonely and it's very, very stressful. I'm in and out of my apartment all the time. And this winter, from February to May, I was very sick. With three trips to emergency room and two surgeries and I was bound to my bedroom. And that barking dog just about drove me out of my mind. And I found out to Erica that we have to keep a record of the dog barking. And I was so sick and I started that and Adam's a really good neighbor. And I thought, I'm not going to be that kind of neighbor that's going to turn in and in. And I, I wanted to keep my heart right. But today it's warm and that dog is out there barking and barking and barking. When I talked to Erica, because it's a new dog, I didn't realize that we had changed the three-minute bark ordinance where you listen for three minutes and then call the police and they responded. And if they could time it for three minutes, and it just, it's been years since I've had a barking neighbor dog. And I think that's really important. And also, I don't mean to throw Shannon or anybody under the bus, but it wasn't that many years ago that when we had a deep snow, the city street crew was out at six in the morning downtown. And they got everything plowed to the center and then later on worried about removing the snow. And yesterday at my bank, I got stuck at the curb. And last year I got stuck at the curb and I was trying really careful to pull in where there were already tracks because I have a van and it's very lightweight. And so this is two years in a row that I've gotten stuck in the downtown district. And I know Shannon's kind of knew, I don't remember what year he came, but I'd like there to be a policy review that that the crews get out again at six in the morning before any business happens downtown and get that cleared away at least to the center. It was all, it was just like clockwork. It made sense. And, and when I got stuck yesterday, I thought it's, it's time to just approach the city. And I, I don't know if I'm going through the right chain of command. I love to run it, but I just thought it's very stressful when you have to ask people walking by to push you out. Last year, when it happened, I went to the bank and then they went door to door to door and everybody has contact. People doing their sidewalks. Nobody even had a shovel. So anyway, those are the two issues I wanted to bring to your attention. Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, Lindy. And those are. I appreciate you bringing it to us. And Mr. Gager will, I rest assured that he'll take a look and he'll let us know.
Yeah.
The commission, we'll follow up with him if we need a policy changer. Thank you.
Oh, yeah. And also I do have a neighbor that he's a professional and he works at home across the alley from me and he did turn in his, he kept track. He turned in his ledger of the barking dog. But it has to be two people. And I go, had I known he was doing it as sick as I was, I would have kept track too. But that was part of why I didn't, I discouraged myself. I thought, well, I'm probably the only one that it bothers. And then I was talking to my neighbor whom I won't name. And he said he cannot take it. And it's very hard for people that work at home.
Thank you. Thank you. And you have your information, so you can call up. Okay.
Patricia.
Two zero four East Calendar Street. I'm just going to give these to the commissioners. One is a, just a letter I wrote to another downtown business talking about, again, downtown is down twenty percent this year. That is almost terminal to a, a place, a commercial place like we are. And so this letter I'd like to give to the commissioners just simply says, here is, if the city makes a commission, a commitment in an action plan, then perhaps this, this can be mitigated over the last five to ten years. Uh, the second thing is concern, I know the city has adopted the housing action plan, the TDCs, but this is a letter and documentation from the residents at the Sherwood Apartments outlining why it may be reasonable to visit the action plan and set standards for the, the quality of life of the residents of the places that are in fact then mitigated. I know, for example, in Alaska, and that, that is within your jurisdiction. They asked that art, for example, be in places that are mitigated. And it is so healthy to have art and beauty and cleanliness and all those qualities in, in a place where people who have disabilities and who have limitations in their lives, it, it, it's enriching. And quite the opposite is happening right now at the Sherwood. I, this is a letter again to all of you with, with a attachment by the residents of the Sherwood.
Thank you. Thank you, Patricia. Are there other folks in person? We'll do in person first and then I'll go to the screen.
Robert Abel, two twelve Garnier Avenue. One thing concerns me is that it's not in the minutes is the, oh, because we're talking about a sewer expansion project. There's nothing mentioned about water hookups in the, in the agenda. And I know that there is water and sewer go together. And I'm wondering about what it's going to cause to the water. And the impact fees because they're significant concerning water hookups in addition to sewers. So I kind of need to know about that.
Thanks, Robert. I'll, I'm going to flag that. And when we get to that agenda item, we'll work it in.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
And just to follow up on the, the dog, if you're the first speaker, bar up. When I hear a dog barking, that's a dog and that I think is in stress. And just for the welfare of the dog, whatever ordinances you have, I would hope you enforce them. A dog is, or a cat, I love them both. Don't get abused. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Other folks in person? For general public on that?
Yeah, I do.
Yeah, thank you. Do you want to start with your name and address, please?
Jane Jarrett, three one five East Lewis. And I was, we were talking about the twenty percent down for the businesses and down. I was over at Saxon Fire the other day and they were complaining because of all the apartments now that are above the businesses, there's no parking. All the parking is parallel. They park all the time. And they said no one could get in to even shop. And I think that's a big problem that we have.
Thank you, Jane. Anybody else in person? Okay, so we'll go to the screen next. Anybody virtually that wants to give general public comment? Not someone. Okay. Thank you. So general public comments closed. Next on the agenda are four consent items. Mr. Gager, did you want to address any of these before? I know there's a couple of bonds on number C or letter C. And I wondered if you wanted to address that just because it's.
You know, it's, is somewhat of a mechanical operation. We, the city of Livingston, has, as noted in the staff report, that's two series of bonds that funded improvements to the sewer system. And they're republi bonds. And we simply just need, as a matter of course in the project, need to certify that the project is complete. And, and so that is, that was item C. And item D is a relatively routine assignment of a reserved special parking space as allowed by the Livingston code. So.
Thank you.
Happy to stand for any questions.
Thanks. Commissioners, any questions? Otherwise, I'm looking for a motion for consent items A through D.
I'll make a motion that we approve consent items A through D.
Second.
Motion by Kell and a second by Lyons. Roll call, please.
Chair News.
Four.
Vice Chair Kell.
Four.
Commissioner Friedman.
Four.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Four.
Commissioner Lyons.
Four.
Motion passes. Next on the agenda are two public hearings. So just want to point out, I, first of all, thank you to Mr. Gager for moving what would have been an action item regarding impact fee assessments and connection times up into a public hearing. So we could talk about that first before we talk about the special improvement district. So the, I wanted to just point out to the commission that this is a discuss approved deny item as indicated in the staff report. So we will be voting on it before we move into the item, just flagging that for you all. The other thing I wanted to point out for the commission is you probably noticed in these staff reports, we do have recommended motions that have been highlighted by staff. So that could be useful when making a motion to see what the staff is looking for. Obviously, we can make different motions. We don't have to use these, but it's a, a starting place. So we don't have to guess. All right. So first up, public hearing regarding impact fee assessments and connection times for Green Acres and Montague Sewer Project. Mr. Gager.
All right. Good evening, members of the commission and members of the public also. This first item is revisiting a topic that we briefly discussed in the last meeting. And staff is, is looking for direction from the commission regarding the impact fee assessments and, and also the, the connection timeframes for the, the project out in, in Green Acres and Montague subdivision. And so a, as discussed in our, our last meeting, staff is recommending a, an impact fee assessment of one thousand six hundred and six dollars per existing connection. And as detailed in our, our last meeting and also in staff report, this is a, a bit below the, the ordinary fee, which would be approximately four thousand five hundred dollars per residence. And so, you know, we, we recognize the, the financial impact that this project will have on, on everyone out there. And, and so we, we have worked to, to try to make this a, a little bit more palatable for, for the residents. And, and I'll also note, as Shannon has included in his staff report in March of two thousand twenty, my predecessor, with the, the cooperation of the commission, agreed to waive the sewer connection charge of a hundred and fifty dollars. And then the, the city will also allow septic dumping as the existing septic tanks are, are decommissioned. And so again, we as a city recognize the financial burden that this project will have on the residents in the community. And, and so we have worked to, to try to reduce that impact to the extent possible. And, and similarly, with the, the staff's recommendation on the, the timing of, of connections, we, we recognize that, that there may be difficulty just scheduling the work with private contractors. And, and so we want to, to be as flexible as possible as we put in that regard, under the terms of the grant and under our, our code. And, and so we, we are recommending that, that everyone switch over by April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. And, and I will note for those of you here and, and online, that, that as this project rolls into construction and, and we have a contractor onboard, you can expect a, a, a large communication outreach effort as the project progresses. So all the, the residents and homeowners understand when the conversion will occur. And so they can schedule the work with their contractor accordingly. And there is a, a project website that includes a, a list of contractors. So if anyone has questions about how to actually get the work accomplished on, on their own private property, there's some resources there a, as well. And so with that, I will stand for any questions. And, and I'll, I'll note that Shannon Holmes is, is also here.
Um, I thank you. I'd like to ask just two questions before we go through the rest of the commission. So one is, there's the five-year financing, right? That folks can, I would appreciate if you could address that, like how that works for people who need to finance. And then the other thing is, I think that the Green Acres story and the Montague story are a little bit different in terms of, I believe that maybe it was Robert who was getting that, was Green Acres residents were already connected to city water, but the Montague folks, not necessarily, right? So, so this, it looks like what's in the packet addresses the sewer connection, but we're not addressing the, the unique needs of the Montague residents. And so I was wondering if you could address that because that will be an additional cost that I don't think is included. And you know what the method would be for us to address that as a commission? If you have thoughts on that. Thank you.
Yeah. Absolutely. And so the, I, I will, I'll take the in order. And actually, I'll, I'll probably send the second one over to Shannon as that it's probably a little bit more of a technical conversation that, that I'd be able to offer. And so the, the five, the five-year financing does, is available to, to residents to finance the, the assessment costs for, for anyone who would, who would like that option. And, and so basically it amortizes the, the cost of, of the project over that five years. And, and that will be billed to users of the system over the course of the five years to, to lessen that upfront burden and not require a, you know, working or sub thousand dollar check.
Who should they reach out to? I think.
And they can reach out to Shannon and his team over in the Public Works Department to work through that process as well.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah. And then Shannon, would you care to touch on water connections for the Montague subdivision residents, please?
Absolutely. So, you know, back to being considerate of just the cost of the SID for the sewer project, the water extension was not included specifically for the Montague residents. For those that may not recall, but, you know, Montague residents have, have really been annexed into the city for about fifteen months. My plan is to have a community discussion, certainly with the city manager and the city commission, and, and look at phasing water extensions into this development and subdivision through the capital improvement plan process, through the budget process, primarily using impact fees that we can use for capacity expanding projects. That would be my, that would be one of my priorities. But certainly it could be done using city, city resources and funds. We could certainly, now that our, our water rates are above the state's target rate, we can continue to pursue state and federal grants for extending water, you know, in this part of town. Or, or use a combination of SID grant funds and city funds, impact fee funds to see this happen. So we're certainly obligated, since they've been annexed into the city, to provide them both water and sewer. So I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, I think it makes sense. Can you try to say it again without jargon though? Just because not everybody is probably going to follow like CIP and you know what I mean? Like, like if you can, yeah, because I mean, I think that sounds reasonable, but I don't know that everybody else is hearing those terms at every meeting like we are. So.
You know, I, I guess in plain lay terms, we have some work to do to sequence the work and organize the funding and, but we do have a time obligation to do it. And, and so we're going to work that process on our end. And I will prioritize that process. So we, we have a, a finite timeline and estimate for the community. And I would imagine that we'll have that done before the budget is adopted in July. So end of June of this year, twenty twenty-three.
And it sounds like too, like maybe what Shannon is saying is using impact fees for other projects in towns that can offset the cost for these residents so that projects that are already happening, those things pay impact fees, that pool of money can go into into neighborhoods like the Montague neighborhood to help offset the cost and reduce the cost greatly for folks that are going to have to tie in. It sounds like that's what he's saying is that he's going to use many mechanisms to try to lower the cost.
We, we have the full resources of the water fund to
Great.
execute on those projects.
Great.
And, and also other funding mechanisms outside of the water fund as well. So, yeah.
Okay.
We will be creative.
Madam Chair, if I may, I, I actually forgot one, one option as well. And, and we're working with the developer in this situation. Currently, we have a developer that's looking to build multifamily homes on some vacant lots in the Montague subdivision. And, and, and that developer is, is helping design and pay for a water main extension specific to improvements to their lot. So that, that, that's certainly another option on getting water service connections to all the lots that have been recently annexed into the city.
Thank you, Shannon. Okay, so now we can move into commissioner questions. If any of you have clarifying questions, Commissioner Lyons, we'll start with you.
Mr. Gager, you mentioned a time obligation related to annexing Montague of, of connecting to city water. What is that? What's that specific obligation? Shannon, perhaps you could, you could correct me if I'm wrong here, but i, if I'm not mistaken, I believe we have five years after the annexation, Shannon. Is that the correct timeframe?
Um, to be honest with you, Mr. Gager, I, I don't know. I've not been in this situation before. And I'm, I'm, I think that's more of a planning and a planning Jennifer, probably Jim Woodhull question than to me. I apologize.
No, no, not to worry. I, I put you on the spot there. I do believe it's five years, Commissioner, based on my recent research, but, but I will get you a definitive on that one with the citation as well. Uh, great. Thank you. And then you also mentioned a project website. And I don't think I saw that, or I don't remember seeing that in the packet. Um, what's the project website for folks who want to connect and keep up to date on that? Thank, thank you. The, the website is www-improvelivingston.org. And did anyone else see that in the packet? Or is that something we could do a better job broadcasting? Yep, absolutely. I believe it was in our prior packet and in our prior conversation last meeting. Don't believe it made it into this one. I apologize. No, I, I just. I think just it would be helpful. Thank you. And that's, that's it for me for now. Oh, one small note in the introduction and history. At the bottom, it transitions into twenty twenty-three, I believe, but still says twenty twenty-two. Yes, absolutely. And I yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Other commissioners, do you have clarifying? Can you answer your questions? Uh, Friedman or Schwartz, do either one of you have questions?
No.
No?
No clarifying questions, no.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so next up, before we can discuss, we need a motion. So do we have a motion? And remembering that there's a suggested one on page fifty, a motion for this public hearing regarding impact fees assessments and connection times for Green Acres and Montague Sewer Project.
I make a motion to approve city administration's recommendation on sewer connection timeframe, April thirtieth of two thousand twenty-four. An impact fee assessment of one thousand six hundred and six dollars per existing connection for Green Acres and Montague subdivision residents for this.
I'll second.
Motion by Schwartz and a second by Lyons. So now we can open up to, to public comment for this agenda item. So if you want, I'm going to start with in the room first and then we'll go to the screen second. So if you want to give comment on this, please let us know. We're here to listen. Who wants to start? I don't see anybody in the room.
I mean, I would start, but I just am still not clear on exactly.
Do you want to, do you want to just start with your name and your address and let us know who you are? And you feel free to say what you're unclear on. So we won't, we won't like do a back and forth during comment, but commissioners and the city manager will take notes and then we can ask the clarifying questions after all the public comment comes in. So it's sort of slow a little bit. So feel free if you want to like come over a little bit, listen to your voice projects. Thank you. I appreciate it. And then if people can see you on screen, just like you can see that.
Um, my name's Jordan Aguilar. I live at two eleven Spruce Lane in Green Acres. Um, so am I allowed to ask questions during this?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. So the impact fee is, is it forty-five hundred or the sixteen hundred?
And just keep asking. We're taking notes and we'll answer them all at the end after public comments.
So I'm curious on that. And then the five-year financing, I didn't understand if that was only for the impact fee or is that for the impact fee? And is there anything available for the residents who have to out of pocket pay an estimated seventy-five hundred dollars to get the sewer hooked up from their house to the street?
Good questions.
Um, and I don't know. I guess really, but this is my first time being here. So I, I don't know. Are you voting on this? No, it hasn't. You haven't done that yet, correct?
Correct.
So I guess if, I would just like you to please consider either waiving the fee or allowing residents to pay, you know, less than, I guess, the forty-five hundred, if that's what it is, just a percentage to help us out. Uh, I just recently bought a house in Green Acres. And so I'd like to be able to continue to live there.
Thank you, Ms. Aguilar. Your name is not lost on me. And when a math teacher, when it's not clear to a math teacher, we have smart things to do. So thank you for being brave and going first.
Really?
I recognize your name because she taught me kit. Um, anybody else in the room?
I have a question. Is this public comment just?
Can you start with your name? Thank you so much. I know.
More of a logistical question. Ashley Peterson, I'm at one oh three Miller Street. Are we just hearing public comment on the impact fee assessment and the connection time issue right now?
Yes, and then. No, that's a great question. Thank you, Ashley. Yeah. Appreciate it. There, there's no bad questions because these meetings are not like any other meetings that we attend. They're very different. Thank you.
I'm Mike Steinman. I'm at two oh seven Spruce Lane. I have to say that I hear Jordan's concerns a little bit. I don't feel like the commission has addressed us as citizens of this community yet. I feel like a cash cow. Every time I turn around, fifteen thousand dollars for this, seven thousand dollars for that. Now we've got assessment fees, sixteen hundred dollars or forty-five hundred dollars and whatever it winds up being. Enough is enough.
Thank you, Mike. Other folks here and that want to give comment in the room before I go to the Zoom?
Yeah, I'd like to.
Sure. Thanks, Robert.
Bob Abel, two twelve Garnier Avenue. Just to get my questions down in an organized format. Just to get my questions down in an organized format. Uh, I'm gonna need to know what the impact fee is for water connection and what my. Timetable is for making that. Water connection, I'm I'm assuming it's gonna wanna be done approximately the same time. That the sewer line is, so I just like to get. That kind of nailed down, so and what, what to expect uh, there. And uh. And I just like, you asked me not to. Say the same thing, and I spoke the last meeting, but this uh. I figured out before the, I knew that the sewer impact fee was gonna be low, or my cost of hooking up water in sewer. Is roughly twenty-three thousand dollars. Now, I don't know how you commissioners are for income, but it's. I would assume the average income in Livingston is considerably. I'm probably average, that's a big hit. Please help us out here, literally. I'm gonna have to do some financing of some kind. Um, get a bridge loan and then sell the house, I don't know, that's, that's what I'm looking at, so. Please be considerate, is all I can ask.
Thank you. Other phones? Oh, thank you, sorry, no, I appreciate it, thank you. I do not have eyes in the back of my head, actually, so.
You're pretty good. Uh, Patricia Gray with two oh four East Calendar Streets, I'll stand up cuz it's hard for me to get that.
Mm-hmm.
Um. I have testified before for on this Montag subdivision and and Green Acres. And I understand, having been the city commissioner, that one of the motivations of Montag. Water system is to get water and sewer so that eventually you can. Developers can develop out. Perhaps in uh, Makes Road or. Further north in the city, that's part of the motivation. But I will say again, and I've said before. Montag subdivision is affordable housing. We have. This mantra that we keep saying over and over again. Well, we need affordable workforce housing in Livingston. Well, before you come up with your twenty-three thousand dollars and before you become the cash cow. The city has to have resources. In which they do not turn turn affordable housing into not affordable housing anymore. It, we want, we want affordable housing, we have it right now. And there are resources that I'm saying, having been a city commissioner. There are resources there. To help these folks out, so that this housing, their housing remains affordable because. A lot of the people that live there. Are making fifteen or twenty or whatever dollars an hour, because this, until the city moved in, this was affordable housing. I I know the Graybo building, we had to come up with fifty thousand dollars for our sidewalk. In front of the Gray, but we had five years to finance it. If we hadn't been able to sell one of our units, we lost our business. This is not, this is serious for people. Who live there, it's whether or not they're gonna be able to keep their homes. And there are resources. So that you do not have to come up with twenty-three thousand dollars. And I believe, I I see that the city is trying. But rather than invest in affordable housing over here. Why don't we keep the affordable housing we have? Going strong, these are nice. Like my friend said, she has four sons and she has a trailer house. She says it's warm in the winter, it's cool in the summer, and I've got a little yard, and I have four kids. Each of whom has a place to sleep and she makes fifteen bucks an hour. So why aren't we even stepping up our game? Even stronger. And I know the city has done a really good job. But let's get even more aggressive. And get these people a break. And keep the affordable housing we have here in Livingston. That's number one. We'll get affordable housing, I don't believe we'll ever get affordable housing because Bozeman will come over and take whatever we got. Except as I've said, uh. Trailer parks for you, you have your own. Trailer house or or manufactured home. But please, please consider keeping the affordable housing we have. Affordable.
Thank you, Patricia. Is there anybody else here in person that wants to speak? Before I go to the screen? I'm gonna go to the screen room, so is there anybody online? Um, hi Kathy. Do you wanna please start by coming off mute with your name and address?
Uh, I'm Kathy Case, I um, lived at uh, one ten Willow Street. One oh one, I'm sorry, one oh one Willow Street. And um, I would like to just uh, add my um. Two cents in. Um, I agree with everything that uh, all of the participants ahead of me have said. And I just want to put a word in for those of us who live on um. Uh, fixed incomes. You know, I, uh, we've said it over and over again, whenever we were annexed into the city. Our taxes doubled. Now somewhere in there. Should be money. To uh, so that. And particularly, so that we don't have to come up with impact fees at this late in the game. Nowhere along this uh, project. Has it been, uh, even, impact fees have not even been discussed until now. Now, I would think that the amount of money that you got in taxes would have covered back fees. And impact fees are most generally um, assessed on new housing. Uh, why, after we have lived here all of these years, would we need to come up with? Um, the impact fees. Um, it's just, you you know, it looks like to me, same thing as the person, I don't remember who it was. That was talking about being a cash cow, it was just another way to come up with more money. And yes, I understand that uh, there was a new transfer station made, built out here. But you know what, we all participated in that. And um, so I don't know why that we should have to pay impact fees at all. Let alone the amount of money that uh, we're going to have to, as other people have said. The amount of money that we are going to have to come up with. And what it's going to boil down to is is. Taking me out of my house. I, you know? You, I could sell my house. But where would I go to live? I can't go over to Montag. Because um, as the other uh, lady said, is there is no other affordable housing? So where am I going to go? Um, I, I am just um, stressed to the max over all of this. Because as other people, yeah, every time we turn around, it's more money and more money. And um, no one has done uh, for a while during this project. They were talking about, well, we would have to do a separate S I D for the water and separate S I D. For the uh, sewer. Um, is that still um, being um? Considered, and? How much would that be? I mean, how much work can we take? Um, I'm not, I'm too old to go out and get a job anymore. Um, so, please. Consider. Uh, those of us who have no place to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Is there anyone else online attending via Zoom that wants to give comment? No, I appreciate that, thank you.
Madam Chair, I had a chat come in from Arlene. I'll see if I can approach her to unmute.
Thank you, Faith.
You're welcome.
We'll let Faith help her get unmuted.
Yeah, I know.
Hi, Arlene, do you, can you please start with your name and address?
Hi, yeah, greetings, Arlene Romer de Feltray, I'm over at one oh six Elm Lane. And um, I'm, I appreciate the concerned citizens speaking up. This evening, and. I was kind of blown away when I received the document with these assessment fees. Uh, the principal that I would be paying is eight thousand one hundred forty-three dollars thirty-one cents. The interest is almost as much as the principal, I don't know what kind of interest rate this is. The interest is six thousand nine hundred seventy-one dollars, I'm paying, that means I'm almost paying as much. Interest per, as the principal. Um, and then if you look at the list, we have Exhibit C, which lists all that, so that's. Just on top of the fact that um, you know, it it is a. All of these things are so burdensome to people, I'm also at retirement age and thinking about. Um. You know. Having to spend all this, you know, the the money that I have uh, into these projects that. Seem to be civic projects and that, that, you know, really um. A city should be trying to raise the money to help. Deal with this, um, there's also another side issue without casting aspersions in any way, but it probably. Maybe is worth bringing up that um, I understand there's some issues that have arose and arisen recently regarding the city attorney. Uh, regarding a Supreme Court uh. Discipline, and so I'm just wondering if there may be some issues regarding. Um, you know, any legal advice or things that were happening uh, in recent months. Uh, regarding legal, you know, how all these things were decided and what. Kinds of laws and and how, you know, how things were drawn up. In terms of getting advice from uh, the city attorney, and again, it's not to cast aspersions on any. Individual, we wish, we wish her well, okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Arlene. Is there anyone else online attending via Zoom that wants to give comment? On this agenda item?
I'm not seeing anyone.
Thank you, Faith, okay. So, public comment for. Um, public hearing regarding impact fee assessments and connection times for green acres and Montague sewer project is closed. And now we can move to follow-up questions um, from the commission, before we deliberate, we can. We can ask some follow-up questions, so um. If it's all right with the commission, I'll go ahead and begin with the notes that I have, and then I'll look to you and the city manager to help. With anything that I didn't catch. So, Mister Gager, can you please walk us through um, Ms. Aguilar's? She brought up some really valid, some valid concerns that um. Maybe it's not totally clear, like the forty-five hundred versus sixteen hundred. Um, what the five-year financing pays for and what the seventy-five hundred dollar cost is, I think. Um, yeah, and I, I think that covers the numbers that she had brought up, so if you could start with that, that would be fantastic, thank you.
Absolutely, and and thank you for coming tonight, I I do appreciate it, and uh. I I certainly am respectful of of the impacts of this project on on every homeowner, please know that. To be clear, the the full impact fee amount would be approximately four thousand five hundred dollars. It is the city staff's recommendation to reduce that down to one thousand six hundred and six dollars. Um, in recognition that 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 is a um, the 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 full impact fee um, is is not small. Um, relative also when you consider some of the other project costs homeowners will incur, and the sixteen hundred, just to be clear. Um, city staff arrived at that by looking at the the total cost um, per gallon to handle wastewater. Um, through our fee study, and then just multiplying that by the average water usage uh, uh, on for residential. Uh, property within the city of Livingston, and so there are other costs that are included in the impact fee calculation. Um, related to facilities construction and and some of those other components that that are not being proposed. Um, to to be assessed here, and so um, to to be clear, that that sixteen hundred. Um, we, the city does offer a financing um, uh, alternative for that for. Um, residents and homeowners who who are unable to pay upfront, and 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 to be clear, that. Um. Whether it's four thousand five hundred, one thousand six hundred and six, or another number that that the commission may choose. Um, to be clear, that is um, really the the impact fee, then there is also the assessment for the work. And that is um, the 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 amounts that were referenced. Um, and they appear on pages sixty-five through sixty-seven of the packets. And and the the, those are the actual, um, you know, the the residence cost to do the work in the street. And and please recognize that the total project cost is was. With about four million, and and the city has um, secured a federal grant to pay for approximately half of that, and so. Um, those those assessment amounts appear in pages sixty-five through sixty-seven of the packet are. Have been reduced by by that two million dollar grant that city received, um, and and so. Uh, you know, homeowners do have the ability also to to finance that assessment um, amount. And and that the impacts there are shown, and then the the seventy-five hundred um, that was referenced uh, is. The city's approximate estimate for the cost of work homeowners will be expected to incur on their private property. As as a city, our work is limited to the the public right of way, and. So we will provide a stub out to the property line, and then homeowners at that point are responsible for connecting that to their home system. And and that most likely will occur as part of the decommissioning of of the septic tanks. Um, that exist out there, and so uh, hopefully that is clear, uh, we do not. Um, at this point have a a financing mechanism for for that private expense, the this approximately seven thousand five hundred. It could be more or less depending on the specific nature of of your individual properties. Um, we don't have a public financing mechanism at this time for that, but we do have mechanisms. Um, for all of the the costs within the public right of way, um, and also the the impact fee as well, so.
Is that, is that pretty standard, like? Would you expect a city to have a public financing for work done on private property, or? Yeah, or what do you, what are your thoughts on that?
I, it's um. No, uh, in in my experience, and and I have been involved in in these types of projects on both the water and sewer. Um, side of the house in in other locations, and no, typically um, work performed. On private property is is managed by um, the homeowner, um. That said, uh, you know, if 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 it's the direction and desire of the commission, I'm I'm happy to research what some of those alternatives may be. Um, but uh, I, it I will be a little bit of research before I'm able to come back with that answer.
Mm-hmm. Um.
Can I ask a follow-up question?
Yes.
I don't wanna derail you, it's just.
You're not derailing me.
And to the exact.
You're right, I'm, my, sometimes my thinking is slower than you're talking, so I have to just, yes, go for it.
So I just wanna reiterate. In as plain of English as possible, what I'm hearing are three costs related to this project for homeowners, so there is. The impact fee. Which is at issue right now, that's what we're voting on right now, and that. Is a ridge, is typically forty-five hundred dollars, what's been proposed by staff is sixteen hundred dollars. Then. Then the second fee. Or the second cost associated with with the project is the independent. On the property of the homeowner, cost to the homeowner, which would be incurred paying to a private contractor. To connect their facilities on their house to the public infrastructure out on the street. So so the first one is impact fee, the second one is the cost of the cost of the homeowner on their own property to connect. To the public infrastructure, and then the third cost is the S I D assessment. Which is related to the square footage or the, how it's being presented here is related to the property square footage.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and that cost goes to paying for the infrastructure in the street. What we're talking about right now is the impact fee. But for the project as a whole and excluding water, we're not, we have, we're not talking about water here, and appreciate you bringing that up. So just relating to sewer, we have impact fee, private connection fee, and then the assessment of.
And then the assessment of basically related to your proportion of property that you own within the entire special improvement district.
Mm-hmm.
So those are the three that, as I'm understanding it, and I want to just make that as simple. Because I, it has to be simple for me to understand it, for, for the benefit of everyone else.
Mm-hmm.
Those are the three costs incurred homeowners, is that correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct. I might add, just in the spirit of full transparency. There is a fourth cost, which is the ongoing monthly service charge from being hooked up to the city service.
And I will put on record, I recently had to do this at my home. That was one thing that I hadn't accounted for. So thank you for, for reminding us of that. Um, and I think it's listed in here as twenty-one dollars a month.
I believe so, yeah.
Um, so, thank, thank you for bringing that up, Mr. Gager, as a fourth of the, the monthly service fee. Just wanted to put that out in plain of, of speak as we possibly.
That's great, thank you.
And, and.
So, just a second. These are just, we're all follow-up questions on the same first Ms. Aguilar question.
So fee number three, which is the assessment of the whole property, that is covered under what we're voting on next. Under the SID, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, just so that we're all.
Mm-hmm.
Page, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
No, you're great. So Freeman and Schwartz, commissioners, do you have any? Follow-up questions on this one little bit? And then we're going to move into the rest of the questions from the public. Do you have any questions on this bit that you want?
Okay. No, um, except to try to stay on this one item. I know it, it encompasses a lot, but. Um, like Commissioner Lyons was saying, we're at this juncture, we're just dealing with the impact fee. With this project at this point, um, and we can discuss the other stuff further. Thank you. I yield.
Thank you. All right. So the next thing I have on the list is. The cost for water for Montag residents. So, I'm assuming that this is a lot like when we first started talking about green acres. That there were some unknowns because we weren't quite sure as a city. Um, we knew we were going to. Apply for grants and see how much we could get offset. So we didn't have all the numbers because we weren't sure how much we could get offset, but we were confident we could get something. How possible is it, Mr. Gager, to get some estimates for water? Cause these, there's an additional cost, like Commissioner Lyons was saying, there'll be an additional cost for all the Montag residents that we're not even discussing.
Uh, uh, I, thank you, Chair. I, I appreciate the question. Um, and, and I do appreciate that it is a, an interrelated. Um, issue for, for the Montag residents. Um, Shannon, perhaps, uh, and I apologize for my ignorance here. But perhaps you could let me know, um, just simply what the, the, uh, the full water impact fee is. Uh, would normally be for a, a residential.
So, the water, I, to be honest with you, I don't know it off the top of my head, but it's, it's, it's similar to, to the sewer. It's, it's in that four, four to five thousand dollar range for water impact fee.
Uh, I, I appreciate that. Thank you. So, um, you know, i- if, if we look at it, you know, in the. Kind of the, the framework of the three or four expenses, you know, that Commissioner Lyons pointed out. Now, I think on the, that impact fee where um, or right there in the forty-five hundred would be the full, the full amount. It could, it could be lowered by the commission. Um, I, at this point, I don't believe, and Shannon, please correct me if I'm wrong here. But I don't believe that we have a solid cost estimate on the, uh, the water side. And I think that, um, just as we found a, a grant that funded fifty percent of the, the cost of the sewer improvements. It's very likely that we will locate external funding sources, um, to reduce the cost on the water side of the house. And so I, I think at this point, um, I would probably be doing the conversation a disservice to, um, to. It, it's, it could be a fairly wide-ranging estimate, um, just from both the cost and, and the offsetting revenue side. So. Uh, but, uh, a- as I mentioned earlier, I will, I will commit to, um, providing the community those numbers. Um, on, on the construction side, uh, here, certainly as we move through the budget process in the next hundred and twenty days or so.
Okay. Um, let's see, uh, any.
If I may continue that discussion, Madam Chair.
I, I'm gonna defer to you.
Uh, yeah, Shannon, if, if you've got something real quickly to add, go for it.
Yeah, so, you know, we, again, w- we, we, the commission approved a contract to do. You know, a preliminary engineering study primarily for green acres. Um, that, that project had started. Before Montag was annexed into the city. The green acres residents, uh, very. Well, th- they let us know very early on in the project, just based on, uh, cost estimates for water main extensions. That, uh, while they would love to have water system improvements at Green Acres. I mean, there are several streets in Green Acres where there's no water mains and services across other. Property owners to connect to the main. Um, they, they made a decision to not include that in the SID cost for this. They also were interested in the cost to pave all their streets and put curb and gutter. And it really, it didn't take very long for that to get outside of the financial ability of the residents there. That being said, we have a lot of existing water that, that is in very close proximity to the Montag subdivision. Um, we have a water main extension that, that is at the transfer station that's within five hundred feet of the Montag. Boundary, uh, I would call west, or east of Garnier. And we have water main, a water main network in and around Green Acres and Brookstone and up Garnier. So, uh, we certainly can provide an estimate based on an, a, a preliminary alignment. To get service to all the lots, uh, that are currently included in this SID. Uh, but it is, it, it is not, it is going to be a less challenging project than maybe some people would, uh, believe. Just due to our location of existing mains, uh, with respect to, to Montag.
All right, uh, uh, thank you, Shannon. So a- as I said, we will, will work up a cost estimate here in, in the next few months. And, um, but it, it sounds like it's a significantly lower, smaller effort than, than this.
I'm just gonna ask you a question because I'm a little bit confused. Do, does the water in. Green Acres and streets and curb and gutter have anything to do with the water in the Montag subdivision? Or am I, am I misunderstanding something? Seems like there might be separate issues.
Uh, it's, it's, it's a little bit separate, um, but I, I think that the point there was that maybe there was some existing water infrastructure. Um, in Green Acres that didn't exist in, in Montag. And, um, but it sounds like we've got water. Uh, somewhat close to Montag, um, whereas, you know, with, with the sewer connection in, in Green Acres, we're coming from a farther distance. So we might expect the cost to be lower.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, okay. So that was my next question. Let's see, um.
Chair, I would just.
Yeah, go ahead, Vice Chair Kale.
Question in that realm. There was also a question about timeline of when a, a resident would have to hook into city water or what that might look like. If you could remember here, Robert was concerned, let's, let's.
Thank you.
Concerned that perhaps you're gonna need to do that at the same time as he was hooking into the sewer. That seems like. There's a difference there.
There, y- y- yes, Vice Chair Kale, um, there absolutely is. And, and I can, I, I can say that we are. Uh, as, as you may have heard from, from Mr. Holmes' comments, we're, we're a bit far off on the water side. Um, we, we do not have that designed. We are not ready to go out to bid. Um, and so we, there is a, a period of time that I would expect, um, just knowing the time that it will take to design. And take this project, the water connection at Montag out to bid, relative to some of the other work that we have lined up for the next two summers. Uh, I would say that safely the community out there is, is three to five years, um, from, from being hooked up to the water. That's my, my best estimate of the time, a minimum, quite honestly, of, of three years, um, to being hooked up to that water.
And, and quite honestly, there, there's probably, there're probably twenty residents in Montag that have a water main adjacent to their lots. Today. So there, there, there are lots in the Montag that already have a water main adjacent. So. I think in order to be fair to everyone, that's, you know, we will certainly look into the extensions necessary. And, and look at how, how the funding mechanisms would, would work for getting. Connections to lots that don't currently have a water main adjacent to the lot.
All right, thank you, Shannon.
Um, thank you, Vice Chair Kale for catching what I missed.
And I just as a follow-up before we move on to a different question. I know that within the city, there is a requirement that folks hook into the city sewer within a certain amount of time. That's. The other part of this thing that we're voting on this evening. When it comes to water, is there a. A requirement that they hook into city water within a certain amount of, of time? Once it's available? Or can they choose, I'm assuming all these folks are on wells, um, can they choose to stay on their well?
Uh, no, we, we have a similar requirement about, uh, time to hook up when the, the pipes are. Available and ready for service in the location, absolutely.
Thank you, that was my follow-up.
Are you, do you have any more?
I'm not on that.
I'm appreciating the attention to detail. Thank you, Helper. Yeah, thank you. Um, okay. The next question, which I think is also another great question, um. And this gets into what, just impact fees in general. Why, why are folks that are living in houses that existing? Paying impact fees? And I know that gets into like, what are impact fees?
Mm-hmm.
If you could help clarify that, that would be great.
Yeah, certainly. Um, and so, on whether it's the water side or the, the wastewater side of the house. Um, I would say that the best description of impact fees are that they represent. The household's proportionate share of, of the city's investments in its infrastructure. And so to be very specific, when we talk about the wastewater side of the house, um, we're talking about. Uh, the, the cost for, uh, not only the wastewater treatment facility, we're also talking about the cost of, of the pipe system. That, um, brings all of the effluents down to the facility. And, and then there are, um, there are other components, lift stations and whatnot that, that are out there. It's not just pipes. Um, and, and so the, uh, the, the impact fees are the mechanism for spreading that cost. That is incurred to develop the system to each, um, property that hooks into the system. And, and so, um, a, a lot of those costs have already been incurred. Some of those costs are yet to be incurred, um, for future projects that we know that are identified in the CIP. Um, and able to be, uh, funded through impact fees. Not everything can be funded through impact fees. Um, and, and so there is a small portion that is for known future work in the next five or so years in CIP. And, and so that is, uh, what impact fees are. And so, um, you know, when a, a property connects to the system. Um, there is, uh, you know, kind of the philosophy that, um, that there was a cost incurred on their behalf. Um, both in the past and in the future. And so the fact these are, are the city's mechanism to repeat those costs.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, let's see, the next comment was just addressing that there's potentially another. Special Improvement District for the Montag, so I just wanted to acknowledge that. And then the next question was really about interest rates and this is the next, um. It's a different agenda item, so I don't want to follow up with that, but maybe bump that to when we get to the next agenda item. Um, commissioners or Mr. Gager, am I missing anything? Did I miss any other questions from the public? Okay. All right. So next, let's move into commissioner questions. Do any of you have follow-up questions, independent of the public comment or dependent on, yeah, Commissioner Lyons?
Um, so, Mr. Gager, you, you estimated that the timing for the water project would be. At a minimum of three years. And I just want to check in with Shannon, who I think is probably more in tune with that to see if that.
Let's, let's just take it through Mr. Gager. You can call on the staff, that's okay.
Um, just, uh, the reason that I ask is that I, I, I think that there's. Two levels of, eh, two sources of anxiety in the room, online and what we've heard from public comment through email, which is. The, the, the cost and then the, the uncertainty of costs and uncertainty of timing. So I think it, as a, as a homeowner, if I knew exactly what my costs were going to be. That would give me some level of, of understanding for my financial planning. And then if I knew when I had to pay them. Uh, that would, that would help. I, I would need to know those two things. Um, and so, you know, having gone through this myself recently, I'm, I'm very, um, sensitive to those concerns of the public. And, um, so I just, I think for me voting, I want to know. Our best estimate of, of the timing and the cost. We're, we're going to be talking about the cost. A decision that we're about to make is going to influence those costs. Um, but the timing piece, I think, is still like a little. A little bit ambiguous. And whatever clarity we can achieve prior to, to making that vote, I'd appreciate it. And so I guess, but I'm just sharing my motivation for the question.
Yeah.
And I, I, absolutely, it's, uh. Very, very fair questions. Um, and, and so, uh, y- you know, uh, Shannon. If, if there's something you would like to add to the conversation, um, that, that. That kind of provides a little more detail or color on the timing of project delivery for the Montag Water Project. I, that would be a good time. A- a- and I would say, um, perhaps it is best to kind of frame your answer. Um, with, in the, kind of the context of the detail you've given in that there are some. Uh, lots out there that are adjacent or nearby water hookups and those might be treated a little bit differently. Um, relative to the, the, the lots that are farther away, if that makes sense. So timing of, of kind of what those two types of homeowners should expect.
Mm-hmm.
People near the pipes and people not near the pipes.
Mm-hmm.
So, um. Okay, um, like I said, we, there, there are. There's quite a large number of Montag lots that are already adjacent to city water. Those, those could happen, um, as soon as the homeowner pays the impact fees and. And makes a request to connect to city services. Um. I would say the lots that require water main extensions, um, how I would have handled this in the ten years I've been here. Is, is Public Works would, would look at this project and create a CIP sheet. And I would talk to Mr. Gager about that and we would weigh the project timing with the budget. Um, based on other city priorities. And, um, if, if I'm directed to. Do that within the next three to five-year period, um, I guess I'm going to be thankful that. We're hoping to be done in the downtown where we've put a lot of our financial resources for the last five years. Um, we're hoping to be done with that, um, in two years. So then we can focus on more of the residential areas. But for the last seven years, our, our focus has been improving the downtown. So that would hopefully open up, once that's completed, open up the resources. Um, certainly, again, since our water, uh, rates are above the state's target rate. Uh, I think we as a community have been very, very successful applying for, uh, coal endowment projects. Like we did the, with the Civic Center Sewer Project. We are now eligible for water system improvements. And I know we will aggressively apply for any state or federal grant money. Um, to help fund a project of this sort. So, um. That is kind of my long-winded way of answering your question, um.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Shannon. Um, so it, it, it sounds like, you know, I, I think that three to five is, is still an accurate window. Uh, again, I, I don't, I didn't want his input because I didn't trust yours. I just wanted to, to have as much information as we possibly did.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, important point of order, if I may.
Um, I think point of order requires, isn't that a motion and a vote?
Wow.
Well.
Let's hear what you're gonna say.
Yeah.
Um, we're, um, off topic here. That's all I want to say. Um, I understand and appreciate all the concerns here, but, um, our discussion is basically on the impact fees of this. Um, our discussion is basically on the impact fees of this, um. And this um, discuss, approve, deny, and uh. Um. I wanna li- limit debate um, to this um, right now, um. And I um, understand all the other um ramifications and stuff like that and that people's um. Um, interest in this, but um. We could go on all night with this, but right now, I'd like to stick to um, the discuss, approve, deny. Um, my motion to um, the impact fee assessment. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Schwartz. Just to clarify, the public hearing also includes connection times. So I believe that's what Commissioner Lyons was getting clarity on. Um, but thank you.
Yeah, but we're talking about water and hookups and stuff like that. It's not germane to this, um, to this motion.
Um, thank you for your input, uh, Commissioner Lyons, you still have the floor?
Um, one, one clarifying question is, uh, CIP sheet, is that capital improvement plan? Sheet? So that would, that would be like a a detailed plan of the strategy for how. Infrastructure will be um, laid out in in the area or throughout the throughout the entire community.
Eh, exactly, eh, yeah, well, a a CIP sheet would be project specific. Um, within the overall capital improvement program, we have a number of different projects. And so a a uh, a sheet um, would ordinarily lay out basically the the scope, schedule and budget of the project. And then also how it ties into to kind of the greater city strategy, um, and and then as we move through our budget process, we will. Um, you know, weigh all of the capital improvement demands and and work with our funding uh, and and other priorities, you know. As I think you heard, um, you know, eh, eh, I mean, the Public Works Department has a line of work ahead of it. For the next several summers or construction seasons, and so we also do factor in uh, staff's ability to deliver projects in that prioritization process.
Great, thank you very much. It's helpful information, uh, I yield, thanks.
Thank you. Other Commissioners, do you have? Um, any questions before we move into deliberation?
One more question.
Vice Chair Kale.
Um, what is with the impact fee by your financing? What is the interest rate? Do we know?
Uh, well, I believe, um, and if someone on the phone from DA Davidson would like to chime in. I believe that um, we provide the municipal rate that is effective at the time of the project's approval. But um, that's typically how it works in my experience, but Bridget just tuned in, so here we go.
I'll let you call on your.
Bridget, uh. Question, I'm not sure if you heard the question, question about the interest rate to be expected on uh, those that finance their assessment.
Right, yes, I did hear the question. So I thought the initial question was on the five year impact aid. Um, or excuse me, um, impact fee, um, financing potentially, which would be an internal kind of city decision. On the SID, the the, one of the um, folks in the public comment asked about the SID rate. And so that would be determined once we have all the construction costs finalized. Um, early in two thousand twenty-three, so we would need, you know, all the construction costs finalized, once we go out to bid and finalize all those numbers. We would um, also have a prepayment period where we allow property owners to prepay. Uh, and not have any interest costs for those who maybe have another financing option uh, individually or. Um, you know, they have enough cash to to pay the principal upfront, so we're gonna give a few um, options. To reduce that fee or that that interest cost, but the interest cost we used was a six point one percent. And and that was high. We used a a conservative rate because we wanted to make sure that when we um, actually lock rates that were not. Underestimating what what that rate may be. We have seen interest rates come down the last couple of weeks. Um, but still, you're seeing mortgage rates um, in the six to seven percent range for for thirty year mortgages, so. Um, we're right now at the six point one percent rate. We just did a billings, city of billings financing. Um, and and that was kind of right in that five point seven percent range, uh, so it's definitely. Um, you know, we're not, we're not too far off when we use six point one percent for our our interest costs. But again, that won't be said until we have a final, you know, budget on the project, uh, early in twenty-three.
Thank you, Bridget, appreciate it.
I'm gonna interrupt again because this is not germane to what we're discussing right now. Um, I'm I'm glad to go on to the SID and talk on all about that, um, uh, at the next public hearing. Um, which is after this, but can we stay on topic? I'm I'm having trouble with this. I'm I'm sorry, um. And I want everyone to be heard, but I'm I'm really, really frustrated with this at at this point. And uh, I'd like to get back on topic. Thank you, I yield.
Yeah, thanks, Commissioner Schwartz. Commissioner Schwartz or Freeman, do either one of you have follow up questions?
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Yeah, Commissioner Friedman, you have the floor.
Yeah, I, we were talking about this twelve years ago when I first came on the commission. I thought the original discussion was a septic tank problem. Am I wrong there?
Uh, no, sir, you are correct. The the genesis of this project uh, is related to the existence of the septic tanks in the neighborhood.
And that that's, that's where we were many years ago, was the septic tanks. Then a lot of this property is close to the river and a bunch of other things that we talked about. So I'm I'm a little confused of what's going on right now, which way we should be talking here. But I thought we were trying to help rather than hurt people. And it seems like we're going in twenty-five different directions at the moment, so. Um, we just need a clearer understanding, but that was my original. Thing that when we first started this, am I wrong that we're talking about people had septic tanks over there? And that's what we were trying to avoid in the future and also fix. I yield.
Thank you, Commissioner Friedman. Commissioner Schwartz, would you like to go next? Do you have any? Questions on this item? Before we deliberate?
Yeah, I I'm sorry, I just, I really wanna stay on topic of that we're talking about it. Um, impact fee assessment of one thousand six hundred and six dollars. And and we're off track, we're talking about water and stuff like that, um. And I appreciate all the questions. I mean, I understand the concerns of the residents out there. And uh. But in order to have a, you know. A a good meeting, we need to follow the agenda somewhat, and we've gotten way, way, way off. Off topic here, um, we're we're talking about the SID. And that's next on the agenda, and I'm I'm frustrated, and I'm sorry, I I don't feel good, I got a bad cold, stuff like that. And uh. Um. I really wanna stay on topic.
Yeah, that's fine. Did you have any questions on this topic? Or are you?
No, I yield, I yield, I.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Schwartz, um. I have a question on page fifty-two of this agenda item in the staff report. Um, so it says that the project budget is three million nine hundred ninety-five thousand dollars for total construction, engineering and bonding. And that includes a two million dollar grant. Um, what is the deadline for that grant?
Uh, the deadline for use of the grant is December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
So that means, do we already have the grant awarded to us?
Uh, yes, this um, was part of the ARPA money that was.
Okay, so. I'm, what is our timeline for this vote? Like, are we bound to a timeline for this vote tonight?
Well, in in order for the project to move forward and and really be um. For us to run the procurement process to get the contractor and get the contractor on board. In order to hit the construction season, um, we are, yes, we are, we are pushing it. Um, I I believe in fact, uh, the the team uh, had had a meeting today, um, and they are, we're we're. We're ready to release the 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 construction bid documents, and so uh, we do have a bit of a tight timeline to get this done.
Is there any work, go room, since it's not the end of December? To push that to another meeting?
Um. Yeah, Shannon, I would, I I welcome your thoughts on that, but if I'm not mistaken, um, I I believe. We're hoping to get bids. Shannon, would you like to um, pro- provide some input? I I do believe that that we are at a point where we would appreciate some direction and a vote on this, this meeting. If it is not the will of the the commission, um, Shannon, do we have room to push it if it's not the will of the commission?
So as much as I appreciate the public process and appre- appreciate the commission's discussions and and public participation. What we're, we're really at the end of our rope here as far as a timeline, um. To be honest, I, it would have been my preference, uh, and again, that's just me as the director to have had this decision. Um, by the last meeting, so I feel like with this three week. Uh, difference between the second meeting in November till the first meeting in December, um. That we were, we were, we were, we were at the end of our, of our rope there, so I I apologize to be a bearer of bad news. And and I think it's great discussions, but you know, this is something that I've been talking to the commission about and the residents. For uh, at least a year and a half, so that that's, that's my thought.
We haven't, we're not to deliberation yet, so I ask everybody just to.
But thank you, Shannon, I would, eh, you know, I I I would note that there was um, a a delay and and this. Issue was to be discussed at the the November first meeting, um, but there was a technical issue that caused it to be delayed, and so. Um, I I, yeah, I I do believe that we would benefit from a direction.
Thank you. Um, any other clarifying questions, Commissioners? Before we move into deliberation, otherwise, once we start deliberating, we will not be, it won't be any more back and forth. Question, answer, it'll be the five of us talking, um, Commissioner Lyons.
Um, so from from the packet, it looks to me like the cost. To the city, um, and really that that cost in my understanding gets extended. To all the taxpayers of reducing the impact fee from forty-five hundred to sixteen hundred. At thirty-two hundred dollars per property comes to about half a million dollars. Um. I saw that on. On page fifty-four of the packet. Um. Is that, is that correct, Mr. Gager?
Uh, tha- that's approximately, yeah, that's a big ballpark.
So then if, um, so that's, so it would be about five hundred thousand dollars, and then that. Is is my other assumption correct, that that, that that cost, which, you know, is being um, removed from these. Property owners essentially gets spread across all taxpayers in Livingston, um, because. You know, the city has to come up with that money somehow, and that's gonna come from the general fund. The general fund is funded by our property tax.
Um, almost, uh, I will say it, the 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 foregone revenue. If I may use that term, um, that foregone revenue will be um, become the responsible of rate payers. Not to general taxpayers, this will become the responsibility of of the the wastewater fund, sewer time. Um, and and those rate payers that pay into to the sewer fund, um, yeah.
So, so it it's not actually taxes, it's it's the, it's what you're paying for those services.
It's it's your twenty-one bucks a month.
Gotcha, uh, that's really helpful, I appreciate that. So then, in theory, if. The impact fee were reduced to nothing, it would be around three quarters of a million dollars spread throughout all those rate rate payers.
I think that that is a very good ballpark estimate, yes, based on my understanding, um.
Thank you. I yield.
Thank you. Any other questions from the commission? Alright, so we're gonna move into deliberation now, and we're gonna take turns, and we can each. Take a turn before we start making a second round, if we need to do a second round. So who would like to go first? Then I shall begin. First, I wanna say that I want the city to look at private property financing options. For the seventy-five hundred. And while. Items are clearly delineated and separate on our agenda, the impacts to people that live here are not. And I want these water estimates coming for the Montag residents sooner rather than later. I'm probably more frustrated right now than I have been as a commissioner in a very long time. That we've been working on this for twelve years apparently, and that this many questions are coming to a meeting from our residents and from Commissioners. We should be at this point, if we are on a tight timeline to make a vote, we should not be having this many questions. Not from the people that are impacted, and not from the five of us in the position to make a vote that's gonna impact these people for years. I'm more than frustrated that we're here. It tells me that our public engagement leaves something to be desired. And I don't wanna be in this position again as a commissioner. I'm glad to see. That this is actually, the suggestion from staff. Is much lower than the impact fee at full cost. It's not lost on me that there's still a pretty large expense on the homeowner, on their private property, and that we're not even done talking about the impacts on the homeowner. Um, these things are not in isolation. So it's easy to separate them and act like it's just, you know, sixteen oh six, but that's just not the reality. That's just the part that we're voting on right now. I don't wanna belabor it, but we shouldn't be getting these basic questions in the final hour of a four million dollar capital improvement project. We just shouldn't. I yield my time for deliberation on this. Could other Commissioners wanna um, chime in? Commissioner Lyons, you have the floor.
I'll go next, um, I I appreciate Chair Newt's your comment about the fact that while. This is a segmented decision based on the public process and based on how we've outlined the agenda. That there are connected, and so I do think that it's reasonable to. Um, to talk about the whole picture while we're, while we're making one discrete um, decision. Um, so I appreciate your, your allowance of of those questions. Um, and I I appreciate the public's questions, um, and the commission's questions because. All of these things are interconnected and, um, I personally. Would want to have the whole picture before making the decision on this first, on this first question. Um, so I appreciate you letting, allowing those questions to to go forward. Um, I I made this comment before, um, as I was posing questions, I'm gonna make it again, that. Um, I understand the anxiety associated with. The uncertainty of costs and timing, and I think that that is just an incredibly uncomfortable position to be in as a, as a homeowner. Um, and, um, and so I. I I also appreciate your direction to the city manager that we want to have these answers for what's coming up in the future as soon as possible. Um, and it's, and it is more than unfortunate that we find ourselves here needing to make a decision on this because of how. Because of timing, um, without the entire full picture of of all the costs, that's, um. That's not a, an ideal process, and that continues that that anxiety related to uncertainty of costs and timing. Um. The matter at hand currently on this decision, um, is the impact fees. Um, again, I paid these impact fees this year, um, and uh. And, uh, it, it was burdensome and, um. And so I'm, I'm especially sensitive to that, and I think that, um. Given what, how, given the new information or new information to me, my better understanding of how. The costs of altering the impact fees will be. Uh, um, borne out by the citizens of Livingston. Um, I don't think that it's unreasonable. To eliminate entirely the impact fees, uh, especially given the context of. What's coming down the line. Um, so anyway, that's something that I'm open to, um, particularly seeing, you know, having been through a budget process now. Um, hearing from Mr. Gager, um, that's something that, that I'm open to. Uh, I'm, I'm curious about other commissioners' thoughts on that. Um, but I think that it's, I think that that would possibly be, you know, a, a sign of good faith to these. You know, new citizens of Livingston who have been recently brought into our community that, that we hear you. Um, that, you know, other, a lot of this infrastructure that, that you are going to be gaining access to. Has been paid for by impact fees of prior residents, um, will be continued to pay for collectively. As citizens of Livingston, um, and, and again, given the context of, of the other costs to these residents. Um, down the line, so that's something I'm open to, and I, I encourage discussion on that, and I yield.
Thank you, Commissioner Lyons, um, who would like to go next, which commissioner?
Okay, thank you, Vice Chair Kayla before, um. I appreciate the comments from both, both of you, and. I would be willing to entertain your thoughts about getting rid of the. Impact fees altogether, it's just gonna be incredibly burdensome, burdensome on these residents. Um, and I would also encourage the city to look at ways. And Mr. Gager to look at ways to help cover the water fees as, as we move into that portion of. Of Montags, um, need to hook up to water at some point. I know that Green Acres has been on water for quite some time, so. Um, it, it's, that's a, it's a big lift, I mean, for anybody to, to be able to have to come up with this. Um, so I certainly would entertain the idea of just taking, taking away those impact fees. As a sign of good faith that we're doing our best, um, to help. I would also, a- as, um. Commissioner Newt spoke about, I would also like us to look at ways to help with the construction costs. You know, that there is a CBG grant being written right now to help, um, with rural, uh, rehab. And, and homes, and I wonder, I tried to get the answer today, but could not get the complete answer, but I wonder if some residents may. Um, if that grant comes through, may qualify for that, and it may help them cover those costs. We'd have to dig into that a little bit further, but maybe that's something you and I can look at, Mr. Gager. Um, so, so there is that, and I would like us to look at other options to do that, to help folks cover those construction fees costs. Um, if that's a possibility. I yield for now.
Thank you, uh, Commissioner Freeman or Schwartz? Do either of you want to share your thoughts? Oh, let's do Commissioner Freeman first, go ahead.
How, how did this project get started? This is, I'm, I'm getting kinda confused. We talked about this before. And we got some, uh, money. For this project, is that true?
Yes.
Okay, so. We don't. I, I'm just confused, we're, we're, we're just going around in circles, but. There, it, it seems like there was a need for this project. Uh, am I correct? That there's a lot of septic tanks that we're talking about, and we're trying to, okay, so that's number one, that's not good. So we're said, okay, let's do something, if somebody says, yeah, I'll give you four billion, four million dollars. So where do we stand? We, we, we get money towards a project. Is it gonna help the project, is it not gonna help the project, or what, what are we trying to solve at this point?
The cost to the residents.
Yeah, what's left, but I'm, I mean, what is the cost? We, we've got a bunch of money.
That's right, it's, we're talking about the impact fee assessment, one thousand six hundred and six.
I'm talking about the consumer, I'm talking about the people that own, own the homes and rent the homes, I'm talking, that's the people I'm talking about.
Right.
They're spending X amount of dollars now, what's gonna be Y dollars when we're done with this project? And was it worthwhile to do what we're gonna do? I mean, and this, I'm, this is where I'm getting all, off track here. I thought this was a good thing that we got, somebody says, I'll give you a gift, and uh, it turns out, I, I, is this good or bad? This, this is where I'm confused.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Schwartz, I think I saw you talking earlier, but you were on mute, did you wanna?
Um, yeah, and after looking through the agenda, I guess this is germane to this, um. Um, you know, especially on this article. Oh, the impact fees. No, I don't want to go off topic. I understand the burden, you know, the impact fee. We've reduced it quite a bit and came up with an option of paying for it over five years. I know it's still about three hundred and twenty-five bucks a year on your tax bill. Um. I, you know, I, I pay taxes too, in the city, I'm city resident. And, uh. This, um, and I, I wanted to thank, uh. Lisa Lawy for coming, uh, finding a way to, uh, get two million dollars to score us number one in the state. You know, to do this pros- project. I'm just really. Having trouble with the whole process on this. Uh, the way we've gone about this tonight, um. I don't know what to say, you know, I, I just, you know, I understand. But, um. You know, um, these impact fees aren't paid for by. The residents, um, of Green Acres in Montague, um, the rest of the city has to pick it up. Okay, rest of the taxpayers. Um. Sure, they, I, I know they didn't want to be annexed, but they were because of. You know, legally required. The cost of a new septic, septic system out in Green Acres would be about twenty thousand dollars. That subdivision has been around since nineteen fifty-nine, when they first connected city water. Um. With this, you know, state-approved new septic systems out there, and, you know, that's kind of where we're at, where we're looking at. Um. Sure, the city, you know, wants the revenue out of Green Acres and the taxes, let's be honest about that. Um, but also, this is a way to help the people of Green Acres. To come online with city sewer, because I'm pretty darn sure that the state's not gonna approve. Septic systems on a lot of those properties. So, with that, um. I think we have a very good mechanism here and, uh. Um. And I, I feel for people that have to pay for it, um, you know, I, I, I pay taxes as well, and I don't, I don't. Um. But I like, um, paying tax means you get something for it also, I hope, and, uh. With that, I'll yield, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Schwartz. I'm gonna go again, we can start around two, um. I want to address Commissioner Lyons's question. Um. I first want to say, I think this. I voted to annex Green Acres, and it was not for tax money, it was not, um. Green Acres obviously has unique challenges, otherwise we wouldn't have ranked number one for this grant, like Commissioner Short said. Green Acres was a special case always, even when the subdivision was built, because it was connected to city water. With the understanding that the community would one day be connected completely and annexed, so Green Acres is a special case. And, uh, Montague or Montag has been brought along, um. I, I believe that the commission has failed these residents. If public outreach hasn't been what it should have been, because we oversee the city manager who oversees staff. And if we miss the boat and, um, they weren't informed, that responsibility al- also lies on the commission. Um, and we need to make our expectations clear to the city manager, what kind of public engagement we expect from his branch of government. So I'm in support of completely waiving the impact fees, I think that it's important, it's one, one tool, we don't have many tools. To help support our residents. Um. I know I'm not the only commissioner that believes that it's important to support working-class residents. And it's, and we're all working-class commissioners, you know, um. This is, this could just as easily be one of us that couldn't afford it, well. It was Commissioner Lyons who couldn't afford it, just to see her, and he probably didn't have anything waived, so he was probably paying the full cost, um. So anyway, to get to the, to get to the point, Commissioner Lyons, if there's a motion to waive impact fees, I would support that. And I think that it's our responsibility also to accept. That we also have failed. Um, if this has been worked on for twelve decades, we've inherited from previous commissions, and it was also on our watch. That public outreach was inadequate. So, I yield my time, um, does anyone else want to go a second time before? We move on? So I'll accept if anybody wants to make a motion to amend, there's currently a motion on the floor, I'll just read it. To approve the city administration's recommendation on sewer connection timeframe. Of April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, and impact the assessment of one thousand six hundred and six dollars per existing connection for Green Acres and Montag subdivision residents.
Chair Newt's.
Yes.
But to make a motion to amend, uh, um. Commissioner Schwartz's original motion, I believe.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and the amendment would be to waive the impact of the assessment. For Green Acres and Montag subdivision.
Sir, a second?
I'll second that.
So there's a motion to amend by Lyons to waive impact fee. Assessment for Green Acres and Montag. And second, we can, oh. Okay, so the first thing we're gonna do is, do we need to comment, or can we just go straight to voting on the amendment?
Uh, uh, just to be clear, we are voting on the amendment to change the motion, and then we'll take up the motion.
That's right, but we don't need to do any more comment or discussion, okay, so right now, we're gonna vote on the amendment. To waive impact fee assessments for Green Acres and Montag. Uh, roll call, please.
Chair Newt's.
For.
Vice Chair Kale. Or Commissioner Freeman.
For.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Against.
Commissioner Lyons.
For.
Motion to amend passes. Four to one. And now we're gonna vote on the original motion. Which is. I already read, but I'll read it again, to approve the city administration's recommendation on sewer connection timeframe of April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. And impact the assessment of one thousand six hundred and six dollars per existing connection for Green Acres, Green Acres and Montag subdivision residents. Um. Yes.
We've amended that motion.
We've amended that, let me read it, thank you, I appreciate that, thank you. Okay, so now the motion is approving the city administration's recommendation on sewer connection timeframe of April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. An impact fee assessment of zero, it's waiving the impact fee for existing connection for Green Acres and Montag subdivision residences. Is that, are we ready? Thank you. Um, okay, so now we're voting on that. Roll call, please.
Chair Newt's.
For.
Vice Chair Kale. Or Commissioner Freeman.
For.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Against.
Commissioner Lyons.
For.
Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Gager, for that, it's not often we amend, so sometimes I forget. Okay, so next agenda item is gonna, we're gonna pause, we normally take a break at seven o'clock, and we're past it, because I didn't want to interrupt the discussion. But we're gonna take, um, just a five-minute break before we move to the next resolution. So, for the folks online, um, Faith will put on a timer, and for the people in City Hall, bathrooms are down. Oh, where we left off.
Oh, this meeting is being recorded.
Thank you, Faith. Yeah, thank you, Faith, um. Alright, where we left off was resolution number five zero seven five. A resolution relating to special improvement district number one eight one, creating the district for the purpose of undertaking certain local sewer improvements. And financing the costs thereof, and incidental thereto through the issuance of special improvement district bonds. Secured by the city's special improvement district revolving fund, Mr. Gager.
Okay, uh, thank you, Chair Newt's, uh, this, uh, question before you, i- items before you. Is, uh, regarding the, the underlying project and, uh, and the creation of the special improvement district. That will fund the underlying project, and so the, the previous item was, um. Settled several aspects of the project for staff, uh, but in order for, for us to proceed with the underlying project. Um, we, we are seeking approval of the special improvement district, um, which will fund the underlying project in part. And, and so I, uh, I, in light of the conversation we've had, I'll, I'll keep my remarks brief, and, and I'll stand for any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Um, commissioners, do you have any clarifying questions about this?
I have one.
Uh, Vice Chair Kale, go ahead.
How long does this special improvement district go on for? So, does that make sense?
Yeah, absolutely.
We talked about the, the interest rate, what is the length of the?
And Shannon, please correct me if I'm mistaken, uh, I believe it is a twenty-year, uh, period on the SID.
That is correct.
Um, can you make that like a gallery view for the? Or not spotlight us so we can see the, thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay, that, that was my clarifying question, thank you.
Other commissioners? But, uh, excuse me, Commissioner Lyons.
Thank you, um. The obligation to pay into the special improvement district continues. Regardless of, of, of deed, is that correct? So, let's say, this is decided, and someone sells their property. The new property owner will be required to, to pay, to make that annual payment, is that correct?
A- a- absolutely, the, uh, the responsibility attaches to the property and not to the homeowner.
And. So, this, I imagine this would be a very rare case, and to really not. The population that we've been, been concerned with in our discussions so far, but a property owner. Does the property owner have to pay this on an annual basis? Because there was, that we did get a question from the public about, about interest. If someone has the capacity to pay for it in quicker than twenty years. To avoid, uh, what looks like a, you know, a pretty large amount of, of interest, do they have the ability to do that?
Uh, yes, sir, as, um, Bridget from D Davidson noted, there is a prepayment window, uh, that exists. For those who would like not to finance their share.
But there's a specific window, and once that window is closed, then it's an annual assessment.
Mm-hmm, that's my understanding, if you would like additional clarification on. That's my understanding. If you would like additional clarification on what the window is, I'm happy to bring Bridget back if you might.
I think that'd be helpful for all of us.
Bridget, good reflexes, please, if you could illustrate what the prepayment window is.
Yes, so we will determine the prepayment window once we have kind of the full, all the construction bids in and so on, so we'll have, let's call it two to three to, you know, more weeks that we'll we'll send a notice out to all the property owners, we'll allow them to prepay within the period. They'll they'll then avoid interest costs. And they'll also avoid some of the the costs of the financing and the reserve and so on, so so that'll be helpful if they can prepay. But also to your question, they can prepay this assessment at any time, so you know, so later on in a year or two, if they decide they they want to prepay the entire assessment, then they'll avoid interest costs at that time.
Thank you, thank you.
Other commissioners? Freeman or Schwartz, do you have any questions? No, okay. Yeah, I don't have any questions either. Did you have another one?
Yeah, it's just, it's just more clarification on the same point. When I'm looking, let's say this is on page. Well, let's just take page sixty-six, because there's a page number there. You see principal, interest, and total assessment. Just so that I'm clear, because I'm I'm not a finance person. If someone were to pay the fee upfront and not accrue interest or not accrue requirement to pay interest. Let's let's just take the the top of the list here. The principal is seven thousand two hundred ninety-nine dollars and two cents, interest was six thousand two hundred forty-eight dollars and thirty-seven cents. If they paid upfront, they'd pay the seven thousand and not the interest.
That is correct.
So they'd be saving, they'd be paying almost half as much. I think that's just helpful to to put on the record.
And and if I could add a kind of a finer point to that clarification, it's just following up on the point Bridget made that if in a year or two, a homeowner elected to pay off the beginning principal, they would stop incurring interest at that time.
Very helpful, thank you.
I have a follow-up question actually to your question, and maybe you said it and I missed it. But if someone, if a homeowner can't pay the entire principal, but they could, and this is a question you asked on, but if they can only pay like half of the principal because they want to keep the interest down. Are there options other than paying all or just the yearly assessment?
Bridget, would you like to handle that technical one?
Yep, they can pay, I think the city will be very lenient on that point and will allow them to pay part and then just finance the rest. And then I also think the city, you know, again, you know, will will at any time, you can prepay parts or pieces and, you know, along the way. The only advantage of prepaying it in that initial period is you never have interest costs. And also, just to clarify, there, the principal amount is the maximum amount. We're hopeful that that'll come in, you know, under, we're also hopeful that, you know, if you do decide to prepay, you'll avoid some of the other built-in costs, like some of the reserves and some of the, you know, other charges. So so if you prepay, we'll have a note out to the property owners, those costs will come in, that principal amount will be lower than the maximum amount we're showing. So there's some other advantages to prepaying early, and that'll be all determined once we have final construction bids.
Thank you, I'm just also being realistic that these vary largely from under four thousand dollars to over ninety-eight thousand dollars. So the reality of people being able to front that much money is you know, hard for me to imagine, but it's good to know that there's options for people. Thank you for your question, and let me do a follow-up. Does anybody else have questions? Commissioners, before we move it forward? Okay, so I'm looking for a motion. There is something on page fifty-eight, it's not highlighted, but please note that there is a motion suggestion. Looking for a motion on resolution fifty seventy-five.
I'm going to approve resolution number fifty seventy-five and authorize the chair to sign resolution number fifty seventy-five.
Second.
Motion by Kale and a second by Schwartz, thank you. Public comment, please, on resolution fifty seventy-five, we'll start with. Give a comment on this item, please. Start with your name and address.
My name is Dennis Springer, P twelve, Gladys Lane. First of all, I'm kind of impressed how much you guys read that damn stuff. That's a lot of stuff. But I'm not efficient. I get through the first page quick.
Don't don't put that on your.
I have a statement, a two-part question. First of all, I want to, as I alluded to the Madam Chair, I hope Shannon's still on there, Shannon and Martha. A good job of keeping us in work. They've sent out emails, they've tried to collect emails, they've had a couple of meetings, they have, I have to be a member of the commission, so a subcommittee that meets with Shannon on a regular basis. Now, whether people read those things, that's something that no one can control. I just need clarification here on why are there two about sixty-five hundred and eight forty-eight hundred? I mean, why are there two resolutions or whatever you want to name it? On that.
Yeah, we'll answer questions after all the public comment.
And secondly, I believe, and I don't know the name, the other commissioner on the end of the table, the lady.
Vice Chair Kale is her name? Vice Chair Kale?
Oh, Vice Chair Kale. Good to meet you. I heard the number she quoted on your booklet was below the forty-eight or four thousand eight hundred forty, four million eight hundred forty thousand. What that came to. I think it's been three ninety-something. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Other public comment from folks in the room? Just start with your name and address. Thank you.
My name is Ashley Peterson. I live at one oh three Miller Street, which is in the Montague subdivision. Thank you for hearing me. I first want to say that I was an opponent to the annexation of our property last year, and I am an opponent to the SID infrastructure taxes as heavily before me. I think it's very interesting hearing timelines coming from, especially in the public works department where me as a homeowner is, unlike the gentleman that spoke to you before, we have not had access to any kind of discussion because we're not a part of Green Acres. And I happened to get this letter on Friday, which gives me a turnaround time of a couple of days to process this information and how extremely high the amounts that we're supposed to be coming up with in the next year seemingly, or over twenty years time period. So it was kind of jarring to get that and then have a turnaround time of this shorter period of time. So I'm glad that the city has been able to mull this over for a long time, but as a homeowner, I have not had the opportunity to do so. I have a couple qualms with the information that I received. First and foremost being Exhibit C. I'm not understanding the math. When you read the bill, it seems there's two numbers that come across. It's a dollar forty-one per square foot. And then with ARPA funding of the two million dollars applied, it would be sixty-four cents a square foot. That math is not reflected on Exhibit C. That math is more like eighty-four cents a square foot. So I'm very confused at the information that we even received because it doesn't reflect either of the two figures that were repeated in the the information that we got. That being a question, another question that I have is of the ARPA funding, understanding that there's a grant timeline of December twenty twenty-three. I'm interested in knowing whether that grant is a reimbursement grant or how that process of the grant tour works. And I'm also interested if there is any opportunities for extensions of timeline in a grant. And I just have to say, I'm a nonprofit director in town. Me and my husband recently bought this property about two years ago, and we own a small construction company. And I've heard a lot of people talk prior to about some inequities of the funding that they're going to have to pony up for this project. Again, I am not in Green Acres. I have a septic tank that is fully functional. I have a lot of land, vacant land that our septic tank has an appropriate amount of space. It has never been a problem for our neighbors, it's never been a problem for the environment. It's never been a problem for anybody, and as a homeowner, I am going to have to pay because of my vacant square footage about four times the average price of a Green Acres home. I'm gonna have to pay sixty thousand dollars for this project. And that's not including the seventy-five hundred that we spoke about in the previous you know, discussions with hooking up to this. But I never asked to be a part of this, I never wanted to be a part of this, and frankly, I don't need to be a part of it because our septic tank is perfectly functioning. And so it seems like there's been also this picking and choosing of different properties that have large square footage that have been added to the annexation to purposefully maybe fund what's going on. So I go back to what Commissioner Friedman has been saying, is this a good thing or is this a bad thing for our community? When you clearly have people struggling at the costs, even with the smallest of parcels of lots in the Green Acres, and they're wondering how they're going to pay for this, and I live in a forty thousand square foot lot that has one toilet. And I'm gonna pay four times the amount of these other people. And I just don't have any answer as to why that, the inequity of that would happen. So to keep this short, by the logic of Commissioner Schwartz, I will, after this project's done in twenty years, be able to pay for four septic tanks, brand new. And I just urge the commission to either wait on making decisions on this resolution because the math does not seem to be mapping to me. The interest rates that we've already discussed are about double the amount of the principal, and there has to be some other funding mechanism that I think that can be explored for this project to move forward. Because ultimately, you have a lot of people that didn't ask to be a part of this, and you're forcing them to not only pay for higher taxes and being a part of the city, which we didn't ask for, but now being a part of a project that we don't need. Thank you.
Thank you, Ashley. Are there other folks in the room that want to give a comment on this agenda item? Before I go to the screen? I didn't ever say this public hearing is open.
Yes.
So.
Opened, we do need to formally open the public hearing.
Okay.
And then we can acknowledge the comments that were made into the record.
Thank you. So now I'm opening, formally opening this public hearing, and I want to acknowledge Dennis Springer's comments and Ashley Peterson. So thank you both, and your your comments will be considered as part of the formal public hearing, so you don't need to give them again. Thank you, and I'm sorry for my error. And now we'll move to the folks online. If anyone online wants to give comment for the public hearing on resolution five zero seven five? I'm not seeing anybody.
I'm not seeing anybody. Oh, Arlene is on, she just sent me a chat.
Oh, thank you, Faith. Arlene, please feel free to come off mute and state your name and address and share your comment with us.
Thank you, Melissa. It's Arlene Romer de Feltré again at one oh six Umland. And just a quick request, if possible, I appreciate every time Commissioner Lyons says he's trying to get things into more everyday language so we can all understand what is going on here, so. I just a request with all the different paperwork we've had, and a lot of it's very legalistic, if there's some way to put together the different conclusions and information about, you know, maybe some nice charts like with the different costs and what they're for and the timelines, and just make it more user-friendly for for us out here, so we can kind of see it just in a more simple way for for each individual citizen here. That would be very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Arlene. Is there anyone else online that wants to give public comment?
I don't see anyone.
Thank you, Faith. Last, last call. Right, so the public hearing for resolution five zero seven five is closed. And now we'll move into commissioners, if you have follow-up questions that you want to ask before we deliberate, I can start. And I will look to you to help me if I miss anything. So the first one is it sounds like it's a process question, and then I want to understand something that you, Vice Chair Kale, said, but versus like Mr. Gager, can you explain why we're taking two votes on these? On this issue tonight, for these issues tonight?
Yeah, I'm very happy to, and so kind of again, the the first vote was to get commission input on two aspects of the project execution that that there was some subjectivity or some staff leeway in how we administered those elements of the project, and so that was the first vote related to the level of impact fees and also the connection timeline. And now, this vote on resolution five zero seven five really is is the vote to approve the special improvement district that will fund the overall project, and so the first vote established what certain parameters of the project will be. This vote will establish whether or not the project moves forward as funded by the special improvement district as proposed.
Thank you. Just to be, well, I'll come back to that question later, and then Mr. Springer was asking something about a number of three ninety, do you know what?
I don't remember saying that, so I'm confused.
Yes, sir, I actually. Chair News.
Yes, please, Mr. Gager.
So the the numbers that the gentleman was referencing, if we look at page one of the packet, which is the agenda, I believe the gentleman was referencing the items actually, or item four C, the dollar amounts for item four C that were previously acted on to authorize signing of the certificates of completion for a separate project. And so this project, which is item seven B on the agenda, is actually, it is a different project, and the total project budget, as Vice Chair Kale pointed out, is three million nine hundred ninety-five thousand dollars, and so two separate projects, I think, just.
And to be, I know I said that number, so sometimes the women on the commission are people confuse us, so that's a thing that happens. Let's see, so moving through the questions. Ms. Peterson had some questions. Noting, of course, that Montague has not been, Montague or Montague, however you pronounce your neighborhood, has not been included in the conversation, so Um, has not been included in the conversation, so that's an important thing to note. Um. I believe. Uh, Ms. Peterson was referencing square foot information. Um, that might have been. I'm not sure, something that came in the mail.
Yes.
Okay.
You can see if something that came in the mail.
Um, do you mind? Do you mind? Can Mr. Gager see that so he can answer your question? Because that would be an administrative thing that's not in our packet, but you would be more familiar with it. Thank you for offering that, so that we can get that question answered.
To.
Um, so I believe the question was.
Okay. Um, yeah, I.
And it's listed again within.
Thank you for sharing that information, so we can. I believe I believe what she was getting at was some um. Uh, looking for some clarity around numbers.
Hmm, I I believe I understand the question there. And and so if I may just paraphrase the question as I hear it is if the overall project cost is three million nine hundred ninety-five thousand dollars. Um, and is estimated at approximately a dollar forty-one per square foot. If two million in ARPA grants have been applied to that project cost. Why does the dollar amount per square foot come out to be slightly less than half? And why is it not exactly half when the external funding is about half of the overall project cost? Did I paraphrase that correctly?
He thinks that my question was based off of those are the two costs that are listed. And then there's no explanation for what this cost on Exhibit C is actually based on. If that those two things continually repeated. Because it's not either one, one forty-one or sixty-four, it's something in the middle. So why is that the case?
Uh, I was gonna actually say, Bridget, I believe you folks. Uh, were were involved in drafting this letter and and calculating these amounts. So perhaps you're you're well positioned to answer this.
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Gager. Yes, exactly. Uh, so the difference is the the base cost that was referenced. Is related to construction costs only. That would be construction, engineering, contingency. Very studies, other miscellaneous costs, sort of like the ba- the base cost. The cost is that that where we calculate what the actual assessment may be is adds in. Um, some reserves that are required by state law. So a revolving fund is required by state law within a special improvement district. And that has to equal five percent of the bond issue. Um, there's also some city administrative fees, a a potential reserve account, which is is really another contingency and some other costs of issuance. So once you count in some of those other costs that I referenced earlier, that. Boy, once we have final construction costs, once we know whether or not we need, you know, we have to have full contingencies. Or we can, you know, officially size this bond or this this project a little lower. The bond information that will go out to every property owner will hopefully be less. The principal amounts listed in that exhibit are the maximum amounts. Um, you know, if we need all the all the reserves and the contingency amount. So that's it's a the difference in the numbers is construction estimates plus all the financing costs. Um, and hopefully, um, those numbers will be again lower. We had to show a maximum amount um, in this resolution tonight.
Thank you. I think so. And then um. The next question was about the grant process and extension of timeline.
Yeah, that I absolutely. So I I I note down two questions related to the grant. One is the mechanics of the grant, whether it's a reimbursement grant or it's been provided upfront. Um, the ARPA funds have been provided upfront. And and so the city will not be reimbursed. We we actually have the money already in hand. Um, and then the second question was related to the grant timeline of whether it uh, it the it can be extended. And this grant can only be extended by an act of the United States Congress. Um, that does occasionally happen, but that is a large undertaking that we are not expecting at this point, just. Because of the nature of the ARPA funds, they were intended for economic recovery. Um, and and to happen in a a short and defined time period. So my expectation is that Congress will stick to the the deadline they established.
Yeah, that's helpful. Thank you. Um, and thanks for catching what I missed. Um, and then I think that's all the questions from. From the public. And so we can move into commissioner questions if anybody has follow-up questions. All right, I'll begin then. Um, I have two questions. So my first is, when we're looking at the costs of assessment, it looks like it's based on total square footage of properties. Is that something that the commission has any control over?
Um, yes, the 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 city does have the ability to select our allocation metric. Um, and and in some cases, uh, these types of assessments may be allocated on property value. Um, occasionally they're implemented upon the linear square footage of property. Um, relative to the roadway and 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 different assessments. And so. Um, square foot was the assessing metric that the city staff chose um, at a point earlier in the process.
Maybe when they applied for the grant or.
Mm-hmm. And and I I would say probably, yes, a little bit after the grants, but but as the SID was being created, yeah.
Um, is that like a standard thing that the city does? Or where's what role does the commission have in that? And when would we be making that decision?
Yep, that that um, is my understanding of current districts in the city. Is that a great number of them are allocated by square foot. We um, we've got some others. Um, that that follow that metric. Um, so that seems to be the common current practice of the city of Livingston. Uh, that's that we in recent weeks have seen some areas where perhaps a a different assessment metric. Would lead to different outcomes for individual property owners. And so please know that the city staff is reviewing the use of the square foot metric on assessments in districts like these moving forward. And and that will be very likely a point of input for you folks. As uh, the city may or may not move forward on any of these districts in the future. Um, and and so, yes, uh, it it is a point where the commission can be involved. And there's a point where the commission will be involved uh, under my time here, city manager.
Does it retroactively change anything? Or is it, once the Sid is created, um, assessments are based on? How it was determined at the point of creation?
So for an SID, it is at the point of creation for some of our other improvement districts. Not special improvement districts, but like the street and like district, those are done on an annual basis. And so for some of those types of districts, um, we do have the ability to change the allocation metric after they are created. But I don't believe that's the case for the SID.
Yeah. Um, and then another question that I have, thank you for that, by the way. Another question that I have is um. So we're talking about this special improvement district, which I'm very pleased that we have a two million dollar grant to offset the cost. But if we hypothetically were to vote this down, what would the cost do of estimate or a guess? A guestimate on what the cost to the property owner would be if we did not move forward with this resolution?
If we do not move forward with this resolution. And a little bit of an assumption here is that the timing of the process precludes our ability to use the ARPA funding.
Right.
The impact to the the homeowner would be approximately double what is shown in uh, in.
Okay. And yes, that is what I was meaning. So thanks for filling in the gap there. Okay, that was, those are my questions. Other commissioners?
My my only question is, I I am, I do have some concern about the public mailing that happened. Um, and why some folks didn't get this until Friday?
Okay, um, you know, I uh, I do appreciate that. And and I have heard that from from other individuals as well. And I I checked with staff and and we sent out the mailings um, the day after you folks acted. And 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 we got them out. Unfortunately, um, the US Postal Service just. This is a difficult time in the year for them, and I think they've got some other larger macro operational challenges that are slowing delivery of mail. Yeah, I've we've experienced that in other aspects and functions of city government.
Thank you. Anything else?
I think that's it.
Other commissioners? I don't hear any. All right, so let's uh, move into deliberation. So we have a motion by Kale and a second by Schwartz. To approve the resolution and authorize a chair to sign the resolution. Deliberation.
I guess I'll start.
Thank you.
I. You know, I I think that. It's helpful to hear or to consider. What the cost to to the individual property owners would be if we were to delay the process and and not include the. The ARPA funding, which covers more than half. Uh, Quentin made the point earlier, and I I just want to reiterate it, a commendation of staff in achieving in acquiring that grant. It's it's massive. I wish there was a grant for my neighborhood and I was connecting this to her. Um. And I'm I don't mean, I don't mean to be flippant in that comment. Um, and. Then, you know, the other consideration is is how this is assessed to the property owners. And when we, when you go through that spreadsheet, there's a huge variation from one property to another. Um, and and I've I've actually heard this argument when it comes to other improvement districts as well. About the the equity of assessing um, fees based on on square footage of property. I think that um. It's helpful to, I it's helpful to think about this case in particular, about what property owners stand to gain. Um, from from the, not necessarily from the special improvement district for the from the outcome of the special improvement district, which would be improved infrastructure. Um, one, I really appreciated in the packet, Mr. Gager, uh, that you referenced. Um, the impacts of these decisions related to um. Strategic, the strategic climate and the strategic goals of the city and and also incorporating the growth policy in into that that assessment. That's incredibly helpful. It's how we need to be thinking uh, with about these long, about these big and long-term decisions that have long-term effects. When we think about the growth policy, uh, this area, uh, one of one of the reasons, and and I wasn't part of this vote. And in Chair Newt's, you can chime in when it's when when you're on deck. Um, but I I, as I understand it, one of the reasons why this part of our community or what what's now part of our community was brought into our community. Was that it was this, it was identified as a a feasible area for growth in in Livingston. By provide, by by creating this infrastructure. The city is signaling with with actual dollars that this is an area suitable for growth in our community. In so doing, property values will be increasing. Because if you have, for example, vacant land in this area that now has infrastructure that could. That could accommodate the the capacity requirements of of increased development. That land value is going to is going to increase accordingly. Um, there, we we all understand the development pressure that Livingston is under right now. And we are getting all kinds of proposals brought to the commission and the planning board. Um, for new housing developments in Livingston. Some of some of which, some of those proposals are not in areas that the city has indicated are suitable for growth. Um, once we provide this infrastructure, signal to the market that this is an area suitable for growth. There will be a a intern um, change in property values and um. An increase in interest of the development of the development community in this area. Uh, I understand that there are mixed feelings about that and not everyone, that's not going to make everyone excited. But that is, that is part of the outcome of our growth policy and and of the strategic plan. Um, and that is, that is something that has not been discussed so far today. So I want to bring that up, that this infrastructure will increase property values. Um, because there will now be capacity for for development in this area. So that's something that I think um, is germane to this conversation. Um, and it isn't, is a way that. Um, assessing these fees based on on square footage is actually equitable. Because someone in this re- in in this neighborhood that has that land that's going to be increasing, in increasing in value stands to gain from that increase in value.
Thanks, Commissioner Lyons.
I.
Thank you. Uh, other commissioners?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Commissioner Lyons, thank you, thank you, thank you for exactly what I want to say. I didn't know how to say it. Um, you're spot on. And uh. Um, I appreciate everything that you bring to this discussion, stuff like that. And uh. Um, I couldn't add anymore to that, but this is exactly the way I feel. And I perceive this. I yield.
Thank you, Commissioner Schwartz. Other commissioners? Um, Commissioner Friedman?
Same way.
Okay.
Yeah, I feel the same.
Thank you. Vice Chair Kale.
Thank you. Uh. Commissioner Lyons, for that, I think that that's helpful. And, you know, I think. To look at this and know that we have two million dollars to put towards this project to offset those costs for these residents. I'm really proud that we have that and that we can offer that to them. Um, I know, you know. Green Acres came in before uh, Montague did and Green Acres, you know, came in and and really, for some folks in that area, really need to be able to get on septic. That was before I was on the commission. Montague voted in before I was on the commission, but we're here now. For better or worse. Um, and the city requires us. And requires these residents to be on sewer. So we have to do it. Um, and I think that to be able to offer two million dollars to help offset this cost is really, is incredible. Um, I know that there are folks particularly in green acres that potentially would not be able to re-up a septic permit. Um, because of density in that area. Um, and so. They're in a predicament where they really need to be able to do this. And I I suspect that was one of the reasons that Green Acres was brought into the city in the first place. Um. These are big number, for some folks, these are big numbers to swallow, and I and I understand that. I'm I'm glad that we can spread it out across time. I'm sorry about interest. And, you know, interest rates are going up, so we better get at this now before it gets any hotter. Um, so. I'm glad that we can bring two million dollars to the table to help these folks out. Um, but this is, this is something that we have to do. I don't, we don't have a choice at this point, according to City Code. To really make any other decision. If I'm understanding correctly. I yield.
Thank you. Um. So I agree with what all of my fellow commissioners have said so far. Um, I would add that we have very few ways to reduce costs to residents as a commission. And so this two million dollar grant is really exciting. I remember back when we were. Uh, in the initial conversations of annexation, and it was a question mark, how big of a grant we could get. So I think um, I'm guessing my fellow commissioners that were with me for those initial votes are just as pleased as I am. That we got grants that cover half the or grant that covers half the cost. We could not have foreseen that we're going to be entering a pandemic and these monies were going to become available because it was all in the before times. Um, the second thing is, um, questions about why we annexed in the first place. You know, the conversations that we were having as a commission. Um. Were also largely about about, you know, these, you talked about um, long-term goals and the growth policy for growth. Uh, some of this was happening before the growth policy was done. And I would say one of the primary conversations we were having was about water resources. Our whole community is very concerned about water and protecting the Yellowstone. And, you know, it's clear, and I believe we had these numbers from the Public Works Director, um. The very best, most high-tech um septic tanks are not as good as our water reclamation facility. And so we're talking about protecting water resources, um, septic tanks at their very best. Um, are still, there's still some like infiltration and some, it's not a perfect system, not that any system is perfect, but um. You know, municipal water facilities, uh, water reclamation facilities like we have are pretty state-of-the-art. I mean, there's, there's probably things we could spend more money on and it could be even better, but like ours is solid and it's. It's really good and it's better than the best septic system. So I think that was an important part of the conversation when we're talking about. Really high-density um septic systems, pretty close to the river um in both of these subdivisions. Um, and then the third thing, I think this really makes the case for a. Building that falls in line with city code, right? So if these things were built. If when they were attack, uh, you know, bringing the subdivision in, in the very beginning, say Green Acres, back in the day, they would have, they already had the. They already had the ground opened up for water lines. They would have just put the sewer lines in at the same time, we wouldn't be in this position today. I mean, and often these things happen at the same time, right? For whatever reason, somebody thought it was a good idea to wait a few decades, but they could have done it at the same time. And current residents would not be paying or incurring those costs. So that's just an important thing to note, that what happens around the city is very important. Because we have um very protective codes that protect our shared resources like water. Which I think everybody in the county agrees is one of the most important things in our community. So, you know. The Yellowstone River and everything that's flowing into it that we don't see. So um, I hope that gets at some of the thinking behind the commission. Um, didn't have the growth policy, but we all, we all know that the river is like, you know, the top of the list for our community always. So um. Is this perfect? No. Um, is it better than I expected it to be a few years ago? Yes. Um, I look forward to the conversations when we, um, you know, the city manager, Mr. Gager. Educates us on other opportunities to consider um assessments. I, again, as a commissioner, sure would have been nice to have those conversations before. This was this far in front of us. And again, I'm going to express my frustration that um. That should have been brought to us. I recognize it was before your time, Mr. Gager, but I, that should have been brought to us quite some time ago that we had other options to. alleviate burdens for members of our community and also at the same time, I appreciate. Um, Commissioner Lyons, you know, you're an expert, a, a planning expert. I mean, it's your day job that you know this issue. Um, better than most of us. So I appreciate that you also share this perspective that. You know, is really important and critical on these decisions. So thank you. Uh, I'm done. Any other commissioners? Alright, so we have a motion. By Kale to approve resolution five zero seven five and authorize the chair to sign resolution number five zero seven five and a second by Schwartz. I am looking for a roll call, please. Chair News or Vice Chair Kale or Commissioner Friedman?
For.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Or.
Commissioner Lyons.
Or.
Motion passes. Alright, next on our agenda. We have some action items. So, action item A, discuss, approve, deny two thousand thirteen city commission meeting schedule, Mr. Gager.
Thank you, Chair News and members of the commission. This item before you is to set the calendar year twenty twenty-three regular meeting schedule. In order to uh give both commissioners and the community an opportunity to. Uh, kind of plan their schedule. As we all uh know, the Livingston Municipal Code. Stipulates that the city commission meets the first and third Tuesday of each month. And so I have drafted a uh commission meeting, regular meeting schedule based on that. The one exception that we have to that in twenty twenty-three is the first Tuesday in July, is July fourth. And so I have not scheduled a, a meeting for that week. I will say, um, it is my full expectation that we will end up having a meeting in early July. Um, but given that that is the, the first uh meeting of the fiscal year. And with the holidays and, and I understand that through July fourth holiday is a big one around here. Wanted, wanted to perhaps leave a little flexibility uh for us to determine what that capability be as we get closer to it. So, um, other than that, the schedule used to the requirements of, of our code and also Montana code annotated. So um, I offer this for your consideration. If there are questions, may I have?
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions? You know, or comments about the schedule? We don't, we can just wrap it all up in here before a motion for this one. Like things you would change or. Is everybody good with this calendar?
I would just say um, if necessary, let's move the meetings to July eleventh and twenty-five and twenty-fifth. July, but um generally, um, agenda is pretty like that time of year, so. I'm open to um, to meetings July, just moving the dates, but um, eighteen is fine with me.
Thank you, Commissioner Schwartz. Commissioner Friedman, is this look good to you? And Commissioner Friedman?
Mal.
Does this look good to you?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, commissioners, Lion and Kale, any?
It's fine.
Okay, um, the only thing I would add is I'm, I'm open also, like, uh, Commissioner Schwartz said, to figuring out a schedule for July that works. I know it's going to be dependent on things we can't predict right now and I'm, uh, I'm entering that month with a flexible. Based on your recommendations as manager. Um, the one thing I would add is commissioner listening sessions have changed during the pandemic for us. I would like it if we as a commission could revisit the commissioner listening session idea. Um, as Mr. Gager is implementing a work plan in twenty twenty-three, because I believe there will be opportunities to um. You know, working on different policy priorities, having our listening sessions, as it were, related to different um. Opportunities for the public to engage around policy priorities that we've set and he's creating a work plan for. Especially like in regards to implementing the growth policy, for example. So I would like to just sort of like put a little flag on that and consider. Uh, work sessions as commissioner listening sessions potentially, just because I want to respect everyone's capacity. On the commission that we don't all have a lot of extra time to give outside of our schedule meetings. So that's kind of what I was thinking. Otherwise, I think it looks great. So um, is there a motion for action item A? There is a suggestion on page seventy.
Do we want to do anything with July or?
Or.
We're not. To sort of. I'll make him motion to approve the schedule.
Alright.
We can only amend it, you know.
Yeah. So we have a motion by Schwartz and we have a, a motion to approve the schedule by Schwartz and a second by Lyons. Um, any public comment on this agenda item?
Madam Chair, we don't have any public.
Yeah, I, I did, I don't know who Colin user number one is, so. Uh, there's nobody, I can hear people in the hallway, but I'm, I'm still going to ask, so thank you, Faith. Um, no public comment, so commission, any deliberation? Nope, okay, roll call, please.
Chair News.
Or.
Vice Chair Kale.
Or Commissioner Friedman.
For.
Commissioner Schwartz.
For.
Commissioner Lyons.
For.
And thank you, Mr. Gager, for getting this to us before the end of the year, so we have time to set our schedule before it picks up next year. Um, next item is discuss, approve, deny, accepting the city manager's recommendation to fill vacancies on the city police commission. Mr. Gager.
Okay, uh, thank you, Chair News. As you all know, the city of Livingston, like many other cities in the state. Has a police commission and the primary responsibilities of the police commission are to uh review applications. And score uh candidates um for um, for employment within the police department. And I'll say sworn law enforcement officers within the department. And so that is the, the primary function is to review candidates and, and score them and provide recommendations on hiring. To the, the city uh manager and police chief. And then the, the second uh function of the police commission is um to, to act a, a, as a, a bit of a disciplinary board. Um, though in practice, uh, that function is, is much less frequently performed um by the, by the police commission. And so we have two vacancies and uh the, the city. Received four applications for the two vacancies. The applications uh are included in the packet for your review, getting on page seventy-eight. And I will say that uh myself and uh the other member of the police commission. And uh, as well as Police Chief Johnson interviewed all four of the candidates. And I, I would say, uh, we are incredibly fortunate in this community to have um both talented, passionate and. Uh, interested individuals to, to serve and, and so uh. Upon uh conclusion of the interviews, it is my privilege to recommend for approval. Two individuals, Janela Johnson and Nicole Madden to be um appointed to the police commission. And uh, and I will stand for any questions that the commission may have on uh either these candidates or the process.
Thank you. Uh, commissioners? Anyone have a question? Otherwise.
Just a quick one. Um.
Sure.
Any relation to the chief?
Oh, that's a good question.
Uh, yes, uh, actually, um, Janela Johnson is uh related to the police chief. Um, though I will say uh. Professional credentials and the quality of her interview um were uh. Quite honestly, I'll, I'll stick to the quality of the interview was uh, was incredible. Um, I think she shows a depth of knowledge in the area. She has a, a very extensive background in uh mental health issues um and, and deals with members of the community um in, in that way. And so I think her understanding of um mental health issues professionally, it will be very helpful. And uh, and then also um her awareness of the law enforcement position, uh, I think will also be helpful. And, and so um, I'm, I am, I am very, very pleased to, to recommend Janela um to, to the commission.
Good question.
Yeah.
What's the, do you have any other questions?
I still have the floor.
Um, yeah, that's what I was asking, if you had any other questions.
Thank you, Grant. Um, I agree wholeheartedly. I, you know, her resume is impeccable and stuff like that. Um, great choices. Um. Somebody that we really, really need on this commission. Thank you. Yield.
Thank you, Commissioner Schwartz. Uh, Commissioner Lyons, I believe I saw your hand.
Yeah, uh, my question's answered.
Great. Uh, other commissioners? Okay, so I'm, and, and I know there's two separate uh recommendations for motion, but I think if you, somebody wants to make a motion. And get two names in one motion, that would be appropriate.
I'll make a motion to approve. Let me get back to the page here. Um. Uh, the city manager's recommendation to fill the vacancies on the city police commission. If I need to name them, let me know. Johnson and. They're with me, Nicole Madden.
Thank you, Commissioner Schwartz. Is there a second?
I'll second.
So motion by Schwartz, sign to Kale, public comment, anybody, anybody? I don't see anybody. Public comment? It's close. Uh, commission deliberation.
Thank you, Mr. Gager, for doing interviews and, and. Going through the process, appreciate that.
I, I will stay. Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, I just want to make an announcement that uh my wife and myself. On December thirteenth, they're leaving for Florida until the thirtieth to be with my son and family in Florida. I wish I were there right now, tell you the truth. Um, I just want to wish you all a merry Christmas and. All the other good stuff that goes with it. And uh, I yield.
Thank you, Commissioner Friedman. I'll, I'll say, um, I think, you know, these, I, I'm not concerned about. Uh, based on the, the responsibilities of the commission, it seems very unlikely that there would be a conflict of interest between. Um, Janela Johnson and the police chief and unless, I guess, he was the person that was going before, in which case I would trust that, you know. She would recuse herself. I, that's the only thing I can imagine and we live in a very small town and so there's going to be familiar people in all the places. I um, really. Am grateful that we're in a position as a community where we have um more applicants than spaces to fill and it is competitive. And we see that these two folks also included robust resumes, so I can imagine that um. Your interviews were very interesting and that I appreciate also as a new city manager that you took time to actually meet people. Because I suspect that's not always the case. So I like that you took time out of your work schedule to sit down and really get to know people in our community. Thank you for doing that. And that's all I want to say. Um, so anybody else? Alright, so we have a motion to approve the city manager's recommendation to Janela Johnson and Nicole Madden to the police commission. Roll call, please.
Chair News.
For.
Vice Chair Kale.
For.
Commissioner Friedman.
For.
Commissioner Schwartz.
For.
Commissioner Lyons.
For.
Motion passes.
Madam Chair, may I add, we need a motion to extend the meeting.
Thank you, Faith, for that. Uh, yeah, I'll need a motion to extend the meeting.
I'll make a motion that we extend our current meeting.
Second.
Motion by Kale and a second by Lyons. All in favor, say aye, aye. I need to hear it, guys. Commissioner Schwartz, this sums up. Commissioner Friedman, do you approve the motion to extend?
Yes.
Yes, okay, it's unanimous. Five zero. Alright. So next on the agenda are action items C and D. Let me just open up my notes really quick. Wake up, computer. Alright, so, um. We need a vote, right, to move into a closed session, ideally, okay?
Please, a motion in a second.
So I'm just going to go ahead and make a motion because we're going to be moving into a closed session, so. I'm, and then I'll look for a second and then we're going to vote on it. So this is the improved process for closed sessions that we're. We're not acting right now. So I move that we enter into closed session to discuss both personnel matters and litigation pursuant to title two, chapter three, section. Two zero three of the Montana code annotated.
I'll second.
Um, so I got a motion by Newt's and I heard Lyons first. Um, you were louder, but I heard him first. So um, so a motion by Newt's, second by Lyons. Um. We, do we don't need a roll call for this since it's administrative? I mean.
Please do call the roll.
I mean, we don't need public comment since it's administrative, we just need roll call. Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. So roll call, please.
Chair News.
For.
Vice Chair Kale.
For.
Commissioner Friedman.
For.
Commissioner Schwartz.
For.
Commissioner Lyons.
For.
Um, motion passes. Um, and. Due to our policy in our handbook, um, I believe Commissioner Schwartz and Friedman will be on their way here shortly because we do not do closed sessions remotely. Um, is that Commissioner Schwartz? You'll be here shortly with Commissioner Friedman? Okay, so we'll see you fellas soon.
And we are.
And we will be not recording for the closed session and everyone else will go in the waiting room and Vice Chair Kale will control the Zoom.
Okay, caller, caller in user one, I'm putting you in the waiting room. You can wait there and we will come back at the end of our closed session.
And we'll have to take staff out of the call as well.
Yeah, I'll go with.
Muted. Why are we muted? I think we're good.
Yeah, I, I don't think we're good.
Okay, Chair. So I'm looking for a motion to extend the meeting.
So I think motion to extend the meeting.
So. So. Lyons made the motion to a second.
Second.
So motion by Lyons, second by Schwartz, um roll call, please, please, can you call?
Chair Nudes.
Yes.
Vice Chair Kale.
For.
Commissioner Schwartz.
For.
Commissioner Friedman.
For.
Commissioner Lyons, for.
Motion passes, and now um we're going to move into closed executive session. Let me just read this, I know I need to. So I'm going to make the motion again, I move, we move back into closed session to discuss both personnel matters and litigation pursuant to Title. Two, Chapter III, Section two zero three of the Montana Code annotated, for a second.
Second.
Motion by Nudes, second by Kale, roll call, please.
Uh Chair Nudes.
For.
Vice Chair Kale.
For.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Aye.
Commissioner Friedman. Commissioner Lyons.
Motion passes, motion passes, thank you.
Okay, so we, not to take a reading meeting, but we are going to reclose the session.
That's right.
Recording will stop, and we will come back um at the end of the meeting.
Thank you. Yes, so we'll open the doors, perfect.
Thank you.
Alright, so now um. I'm just going to wait. Because it's late, and I want to make sure if I forget something that you can. Help me remember. Okay, so now we're through action items A through D, and. There's no decisions to make. So we're on number eleven, city manager committees.
Well, thank you. Uh Chair Nudes and members of the commission. I uh appreciate all of your input uh throughout the open session of the meeting on on those items, and. I know that city staff is excited to move forward with the Green Acres Sewer Project, and um please know that. That I and staff have your comments concerning the public outreach process. And and I could promise you that as we move forward into the later phases of this project. Uh we 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 will communicate and overly communicate with all the residents so they understand. And and moving forward on on all future projects, um please uh e- expect us as a city. To do better, and um and then I would also uh take the opportunity. Uh to to remind everybody, um we did get some snow uh on Sunday, and our team is. Continues to work to remove snow, and and I am working uh w- with with the team on. Potentially some some different things that we can do for future storms, but I do want to remind everyone at home in the community. Um that. Our snow removal crews will be working in the downtown core uh tomorrow evening, starting a. A little after eleven P M and and working all the way through eight A M, and so if everybody could have their cars off the streets in the. In Central Business District, basically from from uh from B to Second, from Park to Geyser. It will certainly help us move the snow, and and so we thank you all in advance for um for your cooperation. Thank you, that concludes my manager comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Lyons.
No further comments at this time.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Thank you for members of Green Acres for showing up, and uh I appreciate. Everything uh that you guys bring to the table. And I yield.
Commissioner Friedman.
We ought to do this more often, under different circumstances, but I learned a lot tonight. And uh. Sometimes it's hard to get around fat and fidget, but uh. That's a tough thing. But as a result of this, I think we're going to be a hell of a less powerful. At least, you know, working with a new manager and a five of us, so. Think this probably should have happened maybe a long time ago, but uh we take it right now, and uh you learn something every day. And uh I appreciate uh this evening is very important. I yield.
Thank you. Uh Vice Chair Kale.
Uh I would just uh like to thank all the public that came out this evening um and gave their comments, very important, um I'm. So thankful for them to come and and to participate. And I think my fellow commissioners are hanging in there, this is one meeting tonight, and I appreciate each and every one of you.
Yeah, I want to thank the public, I I've been really pleased to see the public engagement the last couple meetings, it's really um. Cup filling to have folks coming and engaging on the issues that we vote on. Um I also really appreciate this commission, it's a really high-functioning and strong commission, and I appreciate our. Deliberations and the way we really thoughtfully. Work through the agenda together, ended up in a better place, I also want to um. Say how much I appreciate Mr. Gager. You know, these, some of these projects like. Green Acres have been going on for a lot longer than you've been here, and it's been a thing to witness. You plugging in immediately into our community and jumping into the deep end of the pool. And supporting members of our community and answering questions like the thoughtful experienced manager that you are. It's really fantastic, and I I'm excited. For the community to get, continue to get to know you, and for you to be able to like help usher these projects along to completion and. Doing it in a more, I don't know, just bringing new ideas to the table about how to meet people where they are, so. It's been fun to witness, and thank you for joining us and shepherding it along.
Thank you.
And on that note. Anyone want to make a motion to adjourn?
Now it's you.
Schwartz and Lyons, I'm going to say it was a motion by Schwartz and a second by Lyons. And then um. All in favor, say aye. Alright, all opposed, nay, alright, I just have it. Uh this. Meeting of the Livingston City Commission on December sec- December sixth, two thousand twenty-two is adjourned at eleven P M. Thanks, everybody. Thank you.